Good afternoon and welcome to the June 2nd, 2020 Meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen. This is a remote participation only meeting. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, conference ID 890608276, followed by the hash sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in posted agenda. Despite our efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Okay, I'm having some audio problems, hold on. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hold on just a second while I tell my husband to be quiet for a minute. Okay, sorry about that. Unable to use my headphones. Okay, so welcome. So I think that just to review our protocol for how we proceed, we'll review materials, we'll call on the Board of Selectmen for comments, questions, and actions. And then after that, I'll ask for a list of the remote participants to participate. I'll create the list and call from that list for their comments or questions. So moving forward, we have meeting minutes of May 18th, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept those meeting minutes? Okay. Second. Thank you, Dean. Let me call the role of the Board of Selectmen before we get started. Selectmen DeCastro.
Yeah, present.
Selectmen Kokolas.
Present.
Selectmen Dykens.
Present.
And Selectmen Metters.
Here.
And I'm here, so all the board is present tonight, thank you. So again, we had a motion to approve the meeting minutes and a second, are there any edits? I'll call on Jeff, anything that you.
I have none.
Okay, Corey?
Yes, Madam Chair, on page 13, rolling onto page 14, if you read the very last paragraph, it says, you know, parentheses, comma, and self-service rooms are not, and then it rolls over to the next page. I believe we've lost some part of that sentence and the motion prior to the roll call vote is missing. So other than that, I don't.
Shannon, can you note that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't. The version I got had only the odd number of pages.
Right.
Maybe that's an explanation.
Yeah, and that sentence actually, Selectmen Metters, is complete in the, you go online and read the minutes. Oh yeah, and the package that we picked up in the vestibule had every other page, so it was tough. Did you go online to get the full?
Yeah, the online.
Madam Chair, I do have a question, I'm not proposing an edit, but on page six of the minutes, which is one of the pages that was missing from the printed version, under item B, Board Appointment and Reappointments Process, I'll read it because I know Selectmen doesn't have it in front of them. "The Board agreed by consensus to follow the same process as in the past, but that only two or three selectmen would be needed to conduct the interviews rather than all five members as had been past practice. The Board asked that the process of notifying those with expiring terms and scheduling interviews begin as soon as possible. My understanding was that we would still require three selectmen present if we were interviewing for a regulatory board? Was that the standing of the other members?
Yes.
We were not going to change that, we were going to continue the same practice as we had in the past. Because there was an implication, I think, at least I read it, to mean that we were.
Regular, Corey, that was my room.
Yeah, I thought that's what you had said, Corey.
It is.
All right, as long as we understand what we're doing.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion on just two people attending some of the meetings, I remember that, but I agree.
All right, any other questions or edits based on the online version?
No.
Okay, vote to approve the meeting minutes that are posted on the online version, not the one in your packet. Selectmen Dykens.
Yeah, aye.
Selectmen Metters.
Aye.
Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectmen DeCastro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye, so those are past 5:00. Okay. All right, next is Public Announcements and Agenda Item Requests. I have something and then I'll turn to the board. I just want to note a couple of things. Note the passing of a former town employee, Beverly Ricky, she passed away last week. Bev worked at the town from 1977 to 1994. She started in the accounting office and was appointed town clerk in 1985. She served the town clerk for nine years and retired in 94. The other passing is Ralph Ephy Kroll, who served on the Air Corps Commission and the former Chatham Parent Teachers Association, and was a 23-year career. He had a career with the Chatham Fire Department and he retired as captain. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for Bev and Ephy Kroll, and maybe a moment of reflection for our times right now, the victims of more than 100,000 deaths from COVID and the victims of the racial injustices that are going on in our country right now, so just a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Does the board, any of my board members have any public announcements or agenda item requests? Corey, I see your head's shaking. It's our new way, there's also a hand raising component now on here, I see, so if anybody wants to raise.
Technology.
Okay.
I miss all meetings. All right, so it's not exactly the first of the month, but we're, first meeting of the month, and I'm long overdue, so bear with me. I'm going to read the Board Committee and Commission Vacancies. As of May 27th, 2020, currently, we're, obviously, we're going through, reaching out to committee members to see if they want to be reappointed for next, you know, for their next term. We have openings on various committees, et cetera, so this is a perfect time for people who want to consider serving. This is the updated list. Board of Health has one. Cape Cod National Seashore Advisory Committee, one. Committee for the Disabled, two associate. Conservation Commission, one regular. Three associate, Standards Committee, one. Human Services Advisory Committee, one. Independence Day Committee, one, it will be two as of tomorrow. Local State Building Code Board of Appeals, two. North Beach Advisory Committee, four. Open Space Committee, two alternates. And in Board has one opening. Public Ceremonies Committee has three. Railroad Museum Group has two. Traffic Safety Study, Traffic Safety Committee has one alternate. Members serve three-year terms, associates or alternates serve a one-year term. All interested parties are encouraged to apply to the office of the Town Manager or by completing a talent bank form found on the town's website. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey, any, Dean?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to reiterate what I've mentioned a couple of times, that we have an election, a town election on June the 25th, and you can vote by either absentee ballot or mail ballot. I voted over the weekend, I received my mail ballot very promptly, and it was a very easy proposition, just put it in the mail. So I would encourage everyone to vote, there's no excuse this time not to vote, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Any other board members have agenda item requests or public announcements? Okay, I'll take a roll call of anybody in the audience, remote participants, that have agenda item requests or announcements. Hearing that, does any staff have any announcements they'd like to make? Okay. All right, moving on, coronavirus COVID-19 update. Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Duncanson, and Town Manager Jill Goldsmith. We're going to discuss directives and reopening discussion, the Governor's Orders, the Cape Cod Regional Reopening Task Force update by me afterwards, and then a directive for regulatory and non-regulatory town commissions. So who wants to go first, Dr. Duncanson?
Sure, thanks, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, members of the public, Robert Duncanson, Director of Health and Natural Resources. So just quickly, I'm running through some of the numbers from this week. Worldwide, we are currently at 6,300,000 cases of COVID-19, with a total of 378,000 deaths. In the U.S., we are now a little over 1.8 million cases, and as indicated by the chair earlier, we have approximately 106,000 deaths in the U.S. In Massachusetts, as of the 4:00 PM update today, we are now slightly over 101,000 cases of COVID-19 in the Commonwealth and a little over 7,000 deaths. And I will just caution folks, those numbers took a jump yesterday for Massachusetts, both in terms of the cases as well as in terms of the deaths, because the Mass Department of Public Health changed their reporting all the way back to March 1st, and they now included presumptive or probable cases of COVID-19 as well as confirmed cases. So there was a significant uptick in yesterday's numbers, and those of you that have seen the graphs that we circulate, that was reflected in a spike in those graphs. But keep in mind, that was kind of a one-time anomaly, if you will, while the state caught up with almost three months' worth of back data. They're just trying to make the data as inclusive as they possibly can, so they went back, took a look at all the data from March, April, and May, and included those additional probable cases. So if there were deaths or they were not originally listed, those now are included. In Chatham, we still have 15 cases, confirmed laboratory cases with one death, and as I've indicated earlier, while we had 15 confirmed laboratory confirmed cases, right now, we're only tracking three active cases. The rest have, are older cases that have now cleared the quarantine period or the isolation period and are now considered recovered. So those numbers have held luckily pretty steady for us for the last number of weeks. Just a couple other things to touch on, there's been a lot of activity in the state over the, say, the last 48 hours. Starting Friday afternoon, the state came out with some of their initial guidance for restaurants and hotels and motels and other rentals that theoretically will allow to be open on next Monday, although we don't know definitively that it's going to be Monday, but that is when Phase 2 is supposed to start. So the state tried to get that information and guidance out to those organizations so that they had a little bit of time to prepare. Starting next week, when Phase 2 actives, restaurants will be allowed to do outdoor seating and recognizing that they would take some time to get those set up and prepared and decide on locations and things like that. The state came out with that guidance earlier, which the governor then formally announced yesterday. As well as for hotels, motels, they came out with the guidance on Friday again to kind of help them, give them this week to kind of get things in place and whatnot. And then hopefully, as I said, sometime next week, we don't know definitively, it will be Monday, but the governor will come out with the announcement that Phase 2 for those, as well as a significant number of other organizational types will be allowed. There will be some loosening of restrictions. Although one, and I'm sure people are wondering about, there will be no restriction in the guidance on wearing face masks, and there will also be no restriction in the size of gatherings. The gatherings and whatnot will still be limited to 10. But we'll see if these positive trends that we're seeing in the state's data continue to be positive. We may see some relaxation of those things going forward. So as I said, there's been a lot of guidance out, there's been a lot of conference calls yesterday and today with various state agencies and whatnot. So the Boards of Health can hopefully get up to speed, and we're doing a lot of outreach with that guidance so far this week, so that hopefully we can address a lot of the questions that are coming from the hotels, motels, restaurants, and others. So that when that guidance does come down from the state officially on when that's going to take effect, folks will be ready. There's a number of other things going on that, you know, I can answer questions about, but I just thought I'd give you that quick synopsis of some of the major things that have been happening, you know, in the last, say, couple of days. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. Does the Board have any questions? Peter, any questions for Dr. Bob?
No, Madam Chair.
Corey? Dean?
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Bob. I'm at the risk of seeming a little skeptical about the DPH numbers. Bob, have they broken the new numbers down percentage-wise between probables and actually confirmed cases?
There is a lot of data in the Public Health Dashboard that I sent out or that I send out on a daily basis, as well as the Command Center Updates. That's one thing that they really didn't break down a lot, those spikes that I indicated, you know, in yesterday's graphs when they first made that change. No, there wasn't a whole lot of detail of, you know, how many new versus the older cases. You know, obviously, if you spend some time, you can, we could probably ferret it out.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking you to do that, I just sort of asked the question somewhat rhetorically. The other question rhetorical as well is, have they, on these new additions that they've made, is there breakdown that they've put out between cases in nursing homes and cases not in nursing homes? And I guess even more profoundly of the pre-existing data, do they ever give breakdowns as between nursing home residents and nursing home staff? You know, I throw it out, I'm really not expecting an answer from you because I don't think you have that information handy. But, you know, the governor and in particular, and his team are making very, have from several months now, been making very serious, imposing very serious restrictions on the economy. And they're making decisions presumably based on data, and here we are, three months, more than three months into this, and they've added a chunk of data, I just feel somewhat frustrated by it. It's the same kind of frustration I feel national, on the national level, when we're told, don't wear masks, and then we're told, wear masks. Or we're told that the virus survives 72 hours on a surface, and then we're told, at least I've heard through the media, that it doesn't. I guess I'm just exhibiting some frustration, and I suspect a lot of people are exhibiting the same frustration. So anyway, you don't have to respond to any of that, Bob, but I wanted to get that out, thank you.
Well, I can respond in some ways. You know, the data issue has been a changing one since the thing first started, different states have been reporting different data sets. There's been a movement kind of nationally to kind of standardize that using CDC guidelines and whatnot. Some states jumped on that sooner, Massachusetts was a little, I won't say later coming in, but we also have a significant number of higher cases than most states, so it's taken a lot of effort to kind of pull that together. I am just taking a quick look at the dashboard today, they do have the probable cases broken down. Now shown in the dashboard that I'll send out with today's. They have been providing information on nursing home versus general population, so that that data has been out for a while. And Massachusetts is very similar to the national trend, you know, a lot of our deaths have been in nursing home facilities because we all know they've been at the high-risk type of population. So that data has been out there. You know, I sense the frustration, I share the frustration about the things that are changing. But keep in mind, as I'm sure everybody is, you know, this is a new virus, it's only about four and a half or five months old now, at least in terms of the impact on the human, you know, community. And we are, science is always kind of behind in catching up with these things. So, you know, we're learning daily new science and new data regarding this virus in terms of how long it survives and where it survives and, you know, under what conditions and whatnot, and that's going to continue. Because some of these scientific studies take weeks or months before they, you know, they yield any useful data, then they go through the peer review process. And unfortunately, that's just the nature of science, we can't provide you instantaneous absolute 100% information. So it will change. So with that, you know, I hope I gave you a little bit of an answer and be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you for those comments.
Thanks, Bob. Jeff, did you have anything for Dr. Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, good report, Bob, I just, for clarity's sake, the mask, masks stay on, no groups greater than 10, that stays on. And then maybe I missed it, but did you give an update on Chatham cases in your report? Maybe I missed it, I might have been spacing out, but if you would just repeat that, I get questions, a lot of questions about how many cases in Chatham.
Yes, I did mention that, yeah, right now, we have 15 laboratory confirmed cases.
Yeah.
And we've had one death in Chatham, and as I indicated, of those 15, that 15 number goes all the way back to the start of this process. So probably 10 or more of those have already cleared quarantine and/or are no longer considered active cases. They basically recovered, if you will. So we're really right now only tracking three confirmed laboratory confirmed cases. And by that, I mean the PCR test, we have a number of other probable cases because as I'm sure everybody knows, there is a serum or an antibody test out there. We are getting more and more of those kind of results reported to us, but they are not necessarily considered active. The state is doing contract tracing on all those folks, but, you know, they are not PCR, they're not active infections, if you will, because as everybody knows, the antibody or serum test only says you've been exposed and maybe at some point in the past, we're infectious, but you're no longer infectious. So that, you know, that's part of the quandary we're in, is the difference between the PCR test. you know, that's part of the quandary we're in, is the difference between the PCR test and the serum test in terms of active infection or a, an old infection, if you will. But we are getting more numbers in on people that are going out and getting the serum test. And so that, you know, we're not reporting those right now. We're just reporting the active PCR test because those are the ones that really we are considering and the state considers and other considers active infections, if you will.
Yeah, my other, my other comment is, I think with only 15 cases and one death in Chatham, yeah, we have a small population, but given the, the nature of our demographic in Chatham, I think we can consider ourselves, you know, lucky that we haven't been stricken more with this, this virus. So I feel that we're, we're on the, you know, we're doing well in Chatham, to be honest with you. So thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I would echo that. I think the community has done a great job and continues to do a great job.
Yeah.
You know, isolating, wearing masks. You know, one of the groups that we've talked about on several occasions is the Broad Reach Healthcare Facility in Chatham. They have done an absolutely phenomenal job, testing all their, their residents, testing all their staff, keeping people isolated and keeping the infection out of their facilities. And kudos really go out to them. And I, every time we have Bill Bogdanovich on a call, I reiterate that to him and his staff. They have really done an amazing job. When you look at what's occurred throughout Massachusetts, other healthcare, or not healthcare, but the, you know, the elder community housing and nationwide, I mean, they have really been a shining example. And every time I hear from him, I just knock on wood that it's always going to continue to be good news.
Yeah, he did a great job. He shut it down early over there. He really did. He was smart.
Yep.
Yeah. Hey, thank you. Good update.
Anybody else from the board? Any questions from the remote participants for Dr. Dunkinson? Okay, hearing none. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I've been focused on this week working with the team for workplace modifications to bring the employees back to work off of their rotations. And there's still a lot of modifications that need to be done in many of the buildings. And so, and this isn't necessarily structural, but this is to ensure the social distancing and that we can have certain protocols to go to the employee lunchroom or to the photocopy room. So there's still some of that logistical navigation that we're working on. Because of this and that we feel that operations have been continuing and working well for the public, we're not ready to open to the public yet and probably won't be able to open until the end of June. But that doesn't mean that we're providing any less services. So people can make appointments, call, email, whatever mechanism they need to communicate if they need anything from the town or town staff, and we'll be happy to provide that. There are people monitoring their phones. In fact, they're answering the phones, their office phones, like you wouldn't not notice that they were not in the office. So we're just having some of those challenges that are not unexpected, but are just taking a little longer for us to work out and do those modifications. So hopefully, there's, there's no impact to services. And I think that we've done a pretty good job of services continuing and serving the public. I'm also working on the annual town meeting logistics at Veterans Field. We had a team go out there last week and Terry, who is our resident GIS person and, and operations analyst, he's gridding out the field. We also had the moderator out there too with a number of staff members. And we're working on a plan and we're hopefully going to be able to have a shuttle service too because parking is limited. And it's, you know, it is a town meeting. We expect few participants, but we have to plan for the maximum participants. So still working through that and I'll provide an update next week. And I know that the moderator had run, had wanted to run a couple of things by the Board of Selectment on that. And then it's, as Bob had noted, we're just getting a lot of information from the governor about reopening town facilities. And so I know the Park and Rec Commissioner meeting this Thursday and staff is providing reports to them. The Board of Health met yesterday. So all of this is trying to, we're trying to cull it so that it's an easy to understand and access information on the town's website as well as provide you information. So I know there's a lot of pickleballers that are very happy as the courts open this weekend. So, I'm sorry, on Monday, so that league is safely continued. And I know that there's still some signage needed for the tennis courts and other recreational facilities just to make sure that the COVID-19 protocols remain in place. And I think that is it off my list and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jill. What about supplies and things like that, safety supplies? Are you able to, will you be able to fully, you know, be fully supplied for employees with masks and all the things that are needed going forward?
Yes. So there's been cloth masks that have been distributed. And I know that Dr. Bob has purchased a number of paper masks for when the public comes in, if they forget their masks, that they'll be able to use that. And he's also providing masks to the police department too. So if they're out and about and they see somebody without a mask, that there's an opportunity for that. So we're, we're pretty good on supplies. It's just a matter of keeping up. We've had gloves in central locations and available in every office, including wipes and disinfectant. So, but then again, we haven't had all of our employees back in the same office yet. It's been maybe one in an office and certainly, you know, keeping our, our physical barriers there. So we're very cognizant of that. We're still having our emergency operations center meetings once a week. The chairman's involved with that too. And so there's a side team that's involved with purchasing protective, personal protective equipment, as well as another team that's looking and working on the workplace modifications. So I think we have a good hold, but it's all about duration and how long this goes on.
True. Any questions for Jill? Peter, any questions for Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment. When I read that, and I think I read it correctly, I went over it quickly when it came in just a little while ago. For outside, for, for restaurants and businesses, they'll be able to use, to be able to have tables outside and the ABC rules can be handled locally. That's where I read that. I just want to make sure I read it correctly. And that, I wasn't sure how we handle our, our bylaws, but it seemed to give us a, a, a degree of flexibility on that. Is that right? Yeah.
So I'm still digesting it. I just got something from Town Council today, or actually right before the meeting. So I think what we're going to do is, is digest it and then schedule this as an item either at the next meeting or however the chair wants to handle it. Because I know, you know, it's happening very soon. And again, with just getting a lot of the, the guidance and regulations relief yesterday, we're still trying to digest it. So I know Katie will weigh in on that and Bob and Shawna, Shawna with the local licensing. So Bob, I can turf it to you if you have anything to report.
No, I was just going to say, yeah, Peter, you're, you're pretty well right. You know, in your description, the, the Governor's Order Number 35 that came out yesterday does allow restaurants to have outdoor seating, does relax some of the ABCC criteria. So yeah, we're working on that all now. As Jill said, trying to digest it, make sure it gets out to the restaurants and, and everybody affected. So they have that time period between now and, and when the Governor's Directive comes out and gives us a date for implementation, which could be as early as next Monday, but maybe later. Everybody hopefully will be aware of whatnot. So we're reaching out at the Health Division. I know Shawna is reaching out regarding liquor licenses and all. So we're trying to make sure that everybody's aware of, of what the changes will be. And as I said, you know, we keep getting these updates from DPH through conference calls and all and different interpretations and, you know, can they do this? Can they do that? If they put up a tent, it can't have sides. And, you know, if they put up umbrellas, it has to be, you know, so it's constantly in flux and we're just trying to get that all out as quick as we can to people.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much. Yeah, I read that and I'm trying, was trying to understand what they meant by the 50% rule. I think I understand it, but I'll let you guys look at it if you can. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Jeff, do you have any, any questions for Jill? I think you're muted.
Your mouth is lips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm all set. Thank you, Jill. Good report. Thank you.
How about you, Dean?
No questions. Thank you, Jill.
All right.
Yeah, just one follow-up. You mentioned that the tennis courts, the pickleball courts are opened up. What type of signage do we have out there or are we planning to put out there? And then I know like the Park and Rec is meeting on Thursday. So what other elements are we going to be looking to open up and guidelines to do such?
So we're still working through that. So what's been good is that there's, the state has provided guidelines and sample signage that we can tap into. But again, we're, we're getting these notifications pretty quickly that we don't have everything set up for those protocols. So I know firsthand for the pickleball players is that they, they have a set of protocols that they discussed amongst themselves. I'm not sure there's actual signage there because the pickleball courts are, are basically a net is being set up for them, but they, I know they're wearing gloves and, and having masks. The tennis courts, I'm not sure if Dan Tobin is on this call. I know he'll present that on Thursday because that was a concern. And some other towns are requiring reservations for tennis courts and we're open play. So that's another, another nuance that we're working through. So we should have this hopefully set up so that we can present it to the Park and Rec on, Parker Rec Commission on Thursday.
Yeah, Shereen, it's Bob. I could tell you that about two minutes before this meeting, I was sent a draft of tennis court regulations. So yeah, we're going to review those and hopefully turn those around so they can get to Park and Rec before their meeting.
Great. And I know everybody's anxious to be outside and be active. Um, let's see. Jeff, Peter, Dean, did we, did I call on you? You're all set. And Corey? You're all set. Okay. Any remote participants have questions for the town manager? A quiet bunch tonight. Okay, great. Thank you, Jill. I'm just going to be brief on my update. Continue to meet with the reopening task force just to work on support materials for the municipalities and getting feedback from the industry on reopening the Cape. A lot of the conversations have been around pretty much what Dr. Dunkinson had mentioned prior, the new guidelines that just came out from the governor. Some of the things that have been discussed with the group was the county's on the call and about our own towns having issues with resources. And we know that if you were on a call the other day, the, the Board of Selectmen in Howard for resources for monitoring the beach are going to call on retired police department people to see if they'd like to step up and do something like that. And so in the discussions of resources, the county is working on a program as well. And so we might be able to tap in those from municipal help on monitoring the beaches and whatnot. The big issues that obviously are being addressed too is the balance between the public health issue and the economy. The, the drive has been to try to open up as safely as possible, but the educating the public on the public health piece is still an ongoing effort. And the other piece is, everybody's sort of confused about the Phase Two travel advisory still in place and, and if, you know, how, you know, the governor, the governor isn't saying much about, about, about that during the Phase Two process. So that's an ongoing discussion. But we're just meeting and everybody's plugging along, waiting for all the stuff to come from the governor and then how to get the information out to. The commission has their data court and the county has a website. So for more information for businesses and municipalities. So if anybody has any questions for me, Corey? Any questions? Dean?
No.
Jeff?
No, 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 thanks. No.
Peter?
No, Madam Chair.
Any from the remote participants? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the next agenda item. It, it is the Directive for Regulatory and Nonregulatory Town Boards, Commissions, Committee Meetings. And we have, we talked about how we had the regulatory boards being able to meet by remote participation. And some of the advisory reports put in some requests to begin meeting in June. And Shawna put together a memo for us that indicated that, that in her last, in the last paragraph in the memo, it's, she provided us with a compilation, compilation of the requests from the boards and committees, but also provided us with some additional information on our infrastructure and capacity. In part, in part was the memo from our media coordinator, Ryan Damon, also about some of the resource challenges that, that they're likely be faced with if we put some extra committee on here. We also have been working on our, our interviews. We started to schedule nine or 10 hours worth of interviews. That's going to be another additional resource strain on the remote participant, team meetings forum for Ryan. So I just wanted to, I guess, I can open it up to either Jill or Shawna to give us some additional information. And then we can look through and sort of go through who and what, who, who wants to talk about the various committees and their reasons for wanting to open and what actions we can take. Jill? Shawna? Either?
Shawna, do you want to go first?
Sure. I just wanted to give the board a, an idea of what our capacity could be at this time. So much of our, of our advisory committee meetings were generally held in the smaller self-service rooms, which allowed for the committees to, if you will, record their own meeting, but still allowed for access, the public could still attend. So trying to duplicate that through the remote process is a slightly more challenging. The committees maybe not having the experience with the remote participation process and recording the meetings themselves. We would need some training time. We would need some time to get everyone back up to speed to, to hold those, those meetings online. And there really just isn't the space, as Ryan mentioned in his, in his email, to hold any more live meetings per week. We have all the regulatory boards that are meeting live to promote as much public participation in real time as possible. So I just wanted to have the board understand those, those limitations that we are dealing with right now.
Any questions for Shawna before we move over to Jill? Dean, any questions?
No, I, I just would note, I looked at the grid that Shawna, you provided.
Jamie lost you. I lost you.
Okay. Board of Assessors, can you hear me now, Jeff?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Requesting to meet, I had an email back from the Chair of the Board of Assessors back on the 19th of, I guess it was May, which, in which she indicated they didn't have any need for a meeting. But you note that it's for reorganization prior to 7/1. And maybe that was communicated through the Department of Assessing because I was surprised to see that. But that does raise a question about the various committees that continue to be in existence but are unable to meet. And typically, they would reorganize as of July 1. And if they're not going to be able to meet, we might want to think about something to, to address the status of the current officers of the various committees. And I'm thinking pretty much of the advisory committees only because the, the regulatory committees have been meeting. And my only other comment, and I guess this, I'll throw it out, it's probably something Jill's going to have to answer. I'm not the liaison to the summer residents committee that you are, Madam Chair, but I know that from speaking with one or two of those members who have reached out to me, they're interested in, in meeting at some point soon, and particularly where we have a town meeting coming up. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dean. Any other questions for Shauna or comments for Shauna from the board before?
I just, I have one, if I could, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Just to follow up on Dean's observation, I mean, I, like the Cultural Council, you know, I spoke with the co-chairs and, you know, they usually take the summers off. I mean, obviously, the grants, they were awarded, a lot of the recipients are going to postpone their activities. But one of their co-chairs, Cecilia Moranes, who served very well, you know, I should express my appreciation to her for her service, is actually going to be wrapping up her, you know, service as of the end of this month. So, as she steps down, they'll be left with one chair. Now, they're not really doing anything per se, that heavy lifting until the fall traditionally, but I don't know the mechanics behind if they need to reorganize or at some point, we're going to have to fill that spot anyway. So, I don't know what other committees will have that kind of scenario, but I, it is an interesting observation that was made. So, just going to throw it out there.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, Peter?
Peter, go ahead.
I was, I thought maybe I'd wait till later, but since we started a little bit, when I looked at this and I went down the list and I looked at it as something to do over the next month, maybe month and a half, and then look at it again. I'm not sure if that's what you had in mind. I think it's, I got a good list. I, I put down which I thought needed to get done quickly and we could discuss that later. I really appreciate Ryan's input. It's kind of nice to get the guy who has to worry about this stuff, get his input. And it made a difference in the way I looked at, at this. And, and anyway, I, and I also, I was the one that put in the airport commission, given what Ryan said and some of the other things that are down here, I would put that as a, as a lower priority right now. They don't really have to get anything done, but there are certain things that do have to get done, like guys with the Fourth of July parade, maybe they can do that differently and some of the other ones. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're all set. Jill, did you want to add in to this?
Yeah, so, we don't have a law to really from the open meeting law. We still have, the public has a right to participate in the meeting. And that goes to Ryan's comments about having a live meeting and the nuance of that of being able to comment immediately. Or if it's something like we do as an on-demand or the self-service room, it won't be live. So, the, the burden's on the public to have to check out what the agenda is, the agenda pack and participate that way. So, we were trying to figure out what's the good balancing act. We're still under a state of emergency and I don't know if the board wants to, you know, think of phases as well as opening up for all committees. Maybe we look to what's the essential business that needs to be done by June 30th. And I know that there's a couple of committees that want to meet to prepare for town meeting, the annual town meeting on June 22nd, but we still are working, we'll probably have a meeting next week with a moderator and he's working to bundle up the, the articles and try to work through the meeting as efficiently as possible. And I'm not really sure how he's going to handle reports from various committees and including, no one has seen the warrant really except for visiting the website, but once people get it in their mail, they'll see the explanations where we expect a motion to be offered and when not to be offered. So, so if you want to look at this as you get to June 30th, I haven't heard from staff that there's any capacity concerns. Our only concern is that we, we still have employees on rotation and working remotely. But if this is what needs to get done to handle business until the end of the fiscal year, we can certainly make that happen. And then, if you want to revisit it, because I think every committee is going to want to reorganize by, by July 1st, and I think that's, that's in your committee handbook as well. So, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jill. I know that we could, if we wanted to, we, it's, it's not a, it's not a law that the reorganization has to start right away, but that definitely, we could maybe make a recommendation that, that, you know, committees could reorganize by September 1 or something for this time around. I think it's really important when you look down the list, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee has pending applications that are related to businesses as well as the Traffic Safety Committee. And I think one of the things we don't want to do is hold up businesses from any of the opportunities that they need to get themselves squared away for any openings or, any openings actually that they'd have. So, I'd really want to prioritize that we do do that. From, from my committees that I reached out, Shellfish Advisory isn't on, they didn't get back in time for me, to me, I think it's because I reached out too late for them, but they, they feel that they're all set for now. And the Summer Residence Advisory Committee, I did have a conversation with the Chair yesterday and sort of briefly outlined that, you know, we were, what we were trying to do for town meeting and that, you know, I reached out to Jill and wasn't sure that department heads could, would be able to meet on a regular basis with them like they do usually. I did offer myself, if they did want to meet with me, I'd be happy to do so. The Chair did express that they did want to meet before the war, before town meeting simply to talk about one of the pending petition articles that has, may have some impact on them. Let's see. The CPC wants to review their articles prior to town meeting. The Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, that we do have it down on the list for an agenda item later to discuss the direct sales. The Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee had asked that they be allowed to work on that project with the, with the shelter, with the harbor master and bring back recommendations to us on that particular item. So, that's where I'm at. I don't know, I think the idea of prioritizing and phasing in might be a good idea or looking at some of the ones that might be able to put off for another 30 days would be a pretty good idea to start with. So, I'm open to any discussion or recommendations. I see Jeff has his hand up. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I went through the list as well. I guess, I just need a little guidance. If we give the go-ahead here, I think we're talking only about self-serving, self-service, you know, giving, and then what's an involvement of town staff to doing some training for folks that aren't comfortable with doing a self-service Zoom event? Is that, is that correct, Jill and Shauna? And then I do have the ones that I would prioritize, the ones that need, would like to meet before town meeting. I would prioritize those certainly. And then I also had ticked the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. I know they have business in front of them that there's some pent-up demand by, by businesses that would like to get an answer before they open the doors for the first time. Summer Residence, I ticked if they would like to meet before we have town meeting. Independence Day, I think if they want to do a virtual parade, they need to meet. This is June 2nd. And then I ticked Aunt Lydia's only because we're having an agenda item tonight on sales of the fish pier and I think they need to meet to kind of consider if they're going to consider it in any realistic way. So, those are my priorities, just to try to get folks together before town meeting. But I was concerned about any constraints by staff doing the self-service thing and whether or not we can really pull it off in time. And if you want me to further fine-tune those, I can. But that's with the caveat that, or with the assumption that we have self-service capabilities and staff can handle it.
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, I, I think what we have is the capabilities, especially to train, we use the Teams app or the Teams, what we're using right now, Microsoft Teams. And that's how all of our technology and communications are based on. Our phone system is through Teams and we share documents and everything. And I think now versus, you know, 11 weeks ago where we barely used it to its capacity, I think staff has a very good use of it and the ability as a staff liaison possibly to the boards and committees to help the chairman. And we certainly have good examples of, for chairman to run the meeting, you know, based on the Board of Selectmen and, you know, Conservation Commission, you know, they've had some, both of you have had some pretty technical meetings. So, I think it's a possibility. I think we just have to manage expectations of how quickly we're going to be able to upload those meetings to the town's website and YouTube. So, there might, as Ryan had noted, there might be a delay because I, I mean, we have a two-person channel, a teen staff, and I can't expect them to work, you know, all weekend. So, if you can, what, if you can prioritize, and I think what Selectmen Dickens has said and what's in your listing that Shauna provided, I think it's doable. And again, just manage the expectations, but we don't want to inhibit or prohibit the public's right to participate in the meeting and that's our, our biggest concern at this time.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
That's very helpful. Go ahead, Cory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, no, I do appreciate the fact that the Park and Rec are going to meet on Thursday. It was clear from our last meeting that they need to just kind of bat these ideas around and flush some of these details out that, so they can meet on Thursday and can continue to meet. Because I think their input is very valuable for everything that's going on in this community right now. And then, you know, it's small, it's, it's a small ask, but the Independence Day Parade Committee Chair has asked that they discuss a virtual parade. The other members may have no interest in doing that. That's the first step. I, a complete little side note, just shortly before the meeting, I did get an email that one of the members is actually resigning effective as of today. They're going to have to notify the town clerk to make that official. So, they are one member down now, but I believe the core group that, that will remain may still have an interest. So, I just want to allow them enough time to, if they so decide to take on this task, which they can probably do primarily on their own merits, I don't think staffs are going to be tasked that heavily on this. Just give them a chance to just discuss the idea and then move it forward from there. But I think we know where our priorities are. You know, I think a lot of people want to meet in the reorganizations and stuff like that. Pushed back for a while. That's all, that's all reasonable, so.
Yep.
Do the comments from the board? So, how would you like to proceed? You want to make a motion to enlist and prioritize some of these or is anybody open to making a motion on the priorities, priorities of the committee?
Just to comment, maybe it would be worthwhile, Madam Chair. We just went down the list quickly and see if we have a consensus on what should come and then we can make the, make the motion after that.
Okay.
I mean, I thought that, that we already.
We sort of already did, but.
Yeah, no, just to make sure.
Okay. All right. What's the feeling on the airport? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Actually, Madam, while you're still thinking about it, I see that Craig, our IT director, is on. I don't, I don't know Craig has any comments about this? If you don't mind, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, hi, Madam Chair. So, we can facilitate some of the, some of the boards. It would require us to set up a meeting and record the meeting. As Cory had mentioned, we could set up the meeting, send out the invite to the staff members, to the board members, sorry. And then, we just want to make sure that we're recording the meeting. We, we can do that. It's just going to be a coordination of, you know, we don't want to end up in a situation where we got 10 boards wanting to meet on all different kind of times. One thing I believe Ryan had mentioned is that if, if we did begin to proceed forward, it would be pretty stringent timeframes that we could accommodate many of these meetings, specifically if they're live. You know, Ryan and Mark have specific timeframes. On the other boards, I can generally facilitate them so long as they're flexible with their schedule and we can, we, we can make it work. But I, I do agree that it would be really good if we had a phased-in approach, prioritization and, and get people up to speed with it.
Okay. So, I think we need to prioritize who we'd like to begin with. And then I think Jeff's point was well taken about working on those that want to meet prior to the annual town meeting and any related to business matters. I think that that would be important. Does that make the list come down from the possible 12 or 10 that need to meet to something manageable? Obviously, Airport Commission, Peter had said that didn't feel that that was a, Peter, you're muted if you're trying to talk.
I saw it, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'd see that after the July. Reorganization of the Board of Assessors, I think Dean mentioned that.
Yeah. Community Preservation Committee, I mean, yeah, Community Preservation Committee, review of the CPC articles.
I'm trying to understand whether that's CPC articles that are already on the warrant? Why are we?
Why would they need to be?
Madam Chair, sorry. Sorry, Shauna. The review of the CPC articles would be prior to special town meeting to review if those were going to be changed at all.
Oh, okay. That would.
That's after July.
So, they don't need to meet.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dean.
Regarding the Board of Assessors and perhaps Shauna could talk with Dale concerning their interest in meeting because they have a statutory role. I don't know if they're doing abatements, for example, abatement hearings, and you want to make sure that from a legal standpoint, their officership is properly in place. And maybe if need be, we could get, staff could get an opinion from Town Council on whether they need to meet to, or reorganize or, or, or whatever.
Dean, this is Shauna. That's, that's exactly, the Director of Assessing had asked for that reorganizations because they are involved in the, I believe, setting the tax rate.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be fairly, that would be a fairly quick meeting, I suspect. Most of their meetings are fairly short anyway.
Right.
And only three members.
So, that should be prioritized.
Yeah.
Okay, CPC, we don't, is a no. Council on Aging Board of Directors wanted to review the annual town meeting articles.
Yes, Madam Chair, I know that Barbara Siegel is on the call. I think that's important. We can hear from her shortly because there are two articles relating to the senior center. I know they're both petition articles and the hope and expectation is that they would, they would both be deferred till September to the special town meeting. And I know we're going to be talking, taking up next week at our meeting, a suggestion by the town moderator with whom I spoke yesterday about it. So, it, but it remains that right now on the, on the warrant are two articles relating to Council on Aging, Senior Center. We can hear from Barbara.
Okay. Can we ask Barbara right now what her thoughts are? Might be helpful to, Barbara, Siegel, are you on? Participating. Well, we'll wait. Barbara, are you there? Okay. No, I guess not. All right. We'll go down the line. We'll keep going down. Cultural Council, Cory, you feel that they don't meet till September anyway? That can wait.
They're fine, yeah, they're fine for the summer up. That's standard.
Okay. Aunt Lydia's Cove is, we had talked about, we have a discussion later on about direct sales, as I said, but I think that, I think it's preferred that the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee work on this and then throw back their recommendations to us. So, I think.
Shauna, I am on call.
Okay.
I had trouble on meeting.
Great. Hold on, Barbara. We wanted to know what your thoughts were on, on meeting, the Council on Aging, if you had any additional thoughts from what Dean had said about your reason for meeting.
Yeah, I think because Dean phrased everything I was going to say because the articles are on, that I think that we need to meet and decide what our position is on both articles.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we have, the Economic Development Committee usually doesn't meet June through August. And on the Independence Day Parade, Cory, you made that fairly clear that that's something that would need to happen sooner than later.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, one of the committees here is the Human Services Committee, and I have Mandy on the line who wanted to request that they meet for their request for proposals process. And if it's okay for Mandy just to mention that briefly?
Yeah, thanks. Mandy, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is Mandy. The Human Services Committee was due to approve the final draft of the FY '22 RFP and transmit it to the town manager. The timeline for keeping that process on track is for that RFP to be, to be released to the public before the end of June. So, in order to do that, the committee would need to meet for that one item to keep the, the process on track.
Okay. So, that sounds like that's a priority too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mandy. I'm, I'm just commenting on the, on the, on the, on the ones that made the request. I'm sorry that I'm not including everybody in, in the group. We didn't. in the group. Um, we didn't hear, yeah, go ahead. Cory?
No, I just wanna go back to, yeah, because, yeah, like I said, the EDC, they usually wrap things up in June, and then they take a little summer hiatus and pick it up in the fall, so that's standard for them. Uh, again, the Parade Committee, you know, their request should should be a light lift. Um, the only one I didn't mention, and, um, I I don't think it's necessarily has to be a priority one, but something in the in the that maybe Phase Two, if you wanna call it, uh, would be the Golf Course Advisory Committee, because I'm sure the Golf Course is is taking, it is making some major changes, they're tee time only. Um, you know, I'm sure the summer's gonna drive the crowds out there, and, um, you know, it'd probably be viable to have them meet at some time, time in the nearer future, uh, just to see how things are running, talk to Johnson Management, um, because I've driven by there a bunch of times, and there's there's people playing, so. Uh, that's something that probably in the Phase Two would be a nice little, um, request.
Okay. Um, thank you, Cory. And Summer Advisory Committee was one that wanted to review the warrant.
Yep.
And then the ones that, uh, uh, at the end of here, Traffic Safety Committee had pending applications, as did the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and I honestly think that those should be prioritized. But I wanted to know how everybody felt about the Waterways Advisory Committee, and obviously they have ongoing bylaw review, is that something that we could put off until July, or do you, um?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the process, go ahead.
I spoke with the chair, and I mean, they are more more than eager, you know, to start up and and are, you know, happiest to resume. Uh, but under with all the, uh, everything going on, um, there is, um, you know, the these bylaw reviews are not gonna go to a town meeting this year. So to to to, you know, wait a couple more months for them to meet, uh, would not be a hardship on the on the board at all.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes, Dean.
Regarding the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, uh, it says pending applications plural. Um, and maybe there are more than one, uh, when I communicated with the chair, um, he reported to me that there was one application that was on hold, but that there was a possibility that that could be handled, uh, through the through Dr. Duncanson and the staff, uh, to have it go directly to the Board of Board, to the Water and Sewer Commissioners, obviating the need for a committee meeting, so maybe that could be looked into, which in fact were pressed, uh, in terms of limitations on the number of committees that can meet. He wasn't requesting a meeting of me, uh, but, um, um, that was one item that I was that I was told about.
Okay, so if we went ahead and, Dean, and maybe approved it under the caveat that perhaps they could resolve their issue without having to have the meeting?
Yeah.
That's what I.
That sounded like the way that he was going, and maybe, uh, Dr. Duncanson could check, check out on that, if not, they'll have to be. We don't wanna hold up the applicant, obviously, but maybe there are more than one applicant now.
Okay, um, I see that Jill has her hand up and Dr. Duncanson has his hand up, thank you, uh, so go ahead, Jill.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So there's one on the list that's the Community Housing, it's listed as a Community Housing Partnership, but it's actually the Community Housing Committee, and that's the new name for Affordable Housing Committee. And they do need to meet before June thirtieth because there's a forty B application out there that they'll have to comment on.
Right, so we'll need to prioritize them as well. Um, Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, yes, Dean is correct, there is one application pending, but it would require a hardship variance, and so that could come directly to the Water and Sewer Commissioners, um, without necessarily having input from the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, so we could bring that directly to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's one I didn't mention on the list, and it's South Coast Harbor Plan Committee. They have a request to meet, but I don't know what they're requesting to meet for. Um, Dr. Duncanson, is there anything that you know from that committee that they're looking to about?
Yeah, there's nothing that I'm aware of. I did reach out to Ted Keon, who's the liaison, earlier when I first saw that. Um, he indicated that he's not aware of anything pending, but he was gonna reach out to the chair. So I would say at this point, we're not aware of anything that's a that's, uh, you know, immediate need.
Okay, so.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Cory. You might want, we we can try experiment with the hand raising technique too, if you you want, but go ahead.
Okay, no, I was gonna say, the chair seemed to be more interested, there's a couple of potential candidates for the committee, and there's openings, so I got the impression from talking to Mike that it was more, uh, filling the vacancies on the committee versus actually meeting, um, is his was his sense, so.
All right, okay, all right, Jeff, yay, Jeff, hey.
Quick story, huh? I I was just gonna, I was just gonna summarize what what our deliberations have been. Um, we'd like to see, I'm just gonna run down the list, Board of Assessors.
Yes.
Council on Aging.
Yep.
Aunt Lydia's.
Yep.
Community Community Housing Partnership.
Yes.
Golf Advisory Phase Two, Human Services.
Yep.
Independence Day, Independence Day, Summer Residence.
Yep.
Traffic Safety, Water and Sewer.
Yep, that's what I have.
Okay, so I I think we wanna prioritize those, and the ones that really need to meet before town meeting, I suggest we kinda really get those to the top.
Did we, yeah. Did we say, I'm, I'm, I'm just my hand.
I'm calling, go ahead.
Did we say traffic safety, but Jeff just?
Yes, we did, yes, yes, yep, yep.
Um, remember to put your hands down after what's.
Okay.
I can't even get mine up here, this, uh, is it working?
I need to lower it.
Push on it again.
Yeah, okay, well, you can.
I checked.
Okay, since my hand was lowered.
Okay, um, okay, so we have a list of priorities, do we have, um, and we could, uh, and we know that the ones that need to meet prior to town, so we have sort of a best. Is that enough information to give to the, um, to staff, to board? Um, we obviously would make a motion.
Shereen, you cut out on us.
Oh, I I'm sorry, there's. Um, do we have enough information, Jill? Do you have enough information going forward? Um, to be able to plan if we go ahead and vote for these committees we just mentioned to reopen?
I think we do. What we'll do is tomorrow we'll map out when they are regularly scheduled to meet, what their days are and times. A lot of the the meetings, maybe not so much a lot of them, were evening meetings, so maybe we could figure out a way that we they can meet during the day, so. I think the direction from the board when you voted will be clear, and then if there's any challenges, we'll certainly communicate that with you, but I think that, um, IT and Channel eighteen are committed to making this work.
Sounds like it. Thank you, um, do we have a motion, um, to allow the, um, meetings to occur for, and we can list down the various committees, um, anybody wanna make a motion?
Uh, so so moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, well. Yeah, let's, uh, let's make sure we have the committees. Board of Assessors, Council on Aging, Aunt Lydia's Cove, Community Housing Partnership, Golf Advisory Committee, Human Services, Independence Day, Summer Residence Advisory, Traffic Safety, Water and Sewer Advisory.
Sounds good.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? I'm hearing none. Is there any, um, remote participants that would like to be heard on this matter?
Madam Chair, Steve Buckley.
Um, okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Stephen.
Okay, I would suggest that, uh, if there was gonna be some type of, uh, training by the IT Department, that they, of course, would be using, uh, Microsoft Teams, I would assume, to to, uh, meet virtually and give a tutorial. And, uh, I just wanted to note that, uh, they could increase their, uh, staffing by significant amount by adding an additional person who was already working as a volunteer for the Council on Aging. I don't know if he wants to, I'm not volunteering him, but I just wanna let you know that that's a resource for additional, um, to tutors as far as, um, coming up to speed on that. And the other thing is that, since, um, it's relatively easy, and I don't think it would compromise the tutorial, that any chair or member of a committee who wanted to participate would be, it wouldn't compromise the training, I think, uh, it would probably be better for, as far as learning, you know, anyone who's interested in being able to conduct these meetings and learn how Microsoft Teams works, that this would be, you know, you can kill more birds in that way, you know, or or teach them, so that's my suggestion, um, and, um, I look forward to, uh, learning, uh, how to run Microsoft Teams from the other side. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, um, so we're gonna, uh, anybody else from the remote participants?
Yes, Shereen, Barbara Siegel.
Okay, hi, Barbara, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I have been part of meetings with Microsoft Teams, but not conducting one, so I look forward to any instruction I'll receive. Uh, we do have a scheduled meeting next Monday, but of course we're flexible, so I'll wait to hear from somebody.
Okay, great, you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, um, all those in favor of meeting on, um, I mean, of of scheduling these committees to meet. Um, Selectman Dykens.
Aye.
Selectman Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectman Matters.
Aye.
Selectman Castro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right, so we have committees meeting moving forward. Um, our next. Hold on, I'm looking for, there it is, hiding. Um, Item B, consider request to vend at Chatham Farmers Market, Artist Winery, um, Jaclyn Roper, I believe is how, I will apologize if I'm not pronouncing that correct. Um, and I think that Shawna, you might be able to give us an overview on this?
Sure, Madam Chair, this is, um, a fairly routine and common request for vendors um, to vend at the Chatham Farmers Market. Artist Winery is is a new vendor, um, this year, but in the past you've had, um, Farmer Willie's Ginger Beer Coastal Wineries, and I believe there was an one other a few years ago, so it's it's fairly common. All the paperwork has been submitted, um, that it is required. Uh, I believe Jaclyn is on the call.
Okay.
I'm on the call, thank you.
Welcome, Jaclyn, we'll have some questions for you in just a moment. Um, Shawna, in the application, I just, I noticed that there was a, um, um, a list or, well, actually, there's a letter from the, from the, um, manager of the farmer's market that just said that they invited the winery, but that was all that they had to say about it. Was that, is that just a, um, a standard letter that they send in, or is there any, um, any, did they weigh in on any other, or just? I was just wondering.
That letter, the letter was provided by the applicant, um, just as, I guess you would say, proof that they have permission to participate in the farmer's market, that they're an approved vendor by the by the local market, um, and we're just seeking permission, um, from the board for them to sell the alcohol.
Okay. All right, any questions for, um, for the owner of Artist Winery or the manager? I'm not sure, are you the manager, managing member?
I'm the, I'm the owner, managing member, sure.
Would you like to make any statement or give us any overview, um, anything before we proceed?
Uh, well, certainly, uh, I I I would assume, um, based on the, uh, the meeting you've had this evening and and previous meetings, uh, COVID nineteen is a big concern, uh, in my understanding that, uh, the market has been, um, working diligently with the Board of Health, so there's been a lot of precautions put in place, uh, which we will certainly adhere to, so, uh, as far as Plexiglas, uh, for for separation between myself and customers, we'll be using gloves, masks, and sanitizing wipes and whatnot, um, so, uh, like I said, there's a lot of precautions being put in place. I I do understand that the market, uh, had a soft opening today, um, and so I'd be curious to see how that went, um, when I speak to Kathy later this evening, um, and so, uh, you know, uh, considering your approval, we would be participating starting next week.
Thank you, um, it looks like all the paperwork's in place, um, and as you said, this is all gone through the proper channels. Does any of the board members have questions? Any questions from the board? Cory?
Um, I just say something more for Shawna, I guess, maybe, um, I mean, this is a typical request in a very untypical environment. Um, do we have any idea of how many, uh, vendors the farmer's market, um, uh, what the capacity will be for the summer, or ex- expected participants are, uh, and of the number, do we have any idea how many are 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 new participants for the season?
I only have the listing that was included, um, with the application, I'm not sure if Dr. Bob has any information on if there were going to be fewer participants in previous years, I'm not sure if Judy's on the line, um, but I know that Judy has been working with the organizers, um, over the last few weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, Shereen, it's Bob.
Aye, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, the number of vendors is is about, you know, roughly the same as there's been in previous years. Uh, they did have a soft opening today, they did not have all their vendors present this afternoon. Um, our health inspector was down there, meeting with folks and reviewing the situation. Uh, they're pretty well in compliance with the COVID nineteen, uh, guidelines, they do have a couple of things that they're still waiting on, uh, that were delayed from their supplier, but hopefully by next week that will all be in place.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, any, what do you want to make a motion on this matter?
Madam Chair, I moved to approve the application from Artist Winery to vend at the Chatham Farmers Market on Tuesday afternoons, three PM to six thirty PM, from June ninth to October twentieth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, a second on that?
Second.
Dean, that was you seconding?
Yes.
Thank you, um, is there any, uh, remote? Matter. I'm sorry, somebody mute, I don't know if somebody's. Um, is there any remote participants that would like to weigh in on this matter? Okay, hearing none, then we'll take a roll call vote. Cory?
Uh, yes.
Jeff?
Abstain.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye, so that's four, zero, one, okay, um, um, Artist Winery, uh, Jaclyn, um, we'll see you at the farmer's market. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Great, okay, our next item of business is to consider request for fee waiver, ZBA application fee for Habitat for Humanity. Um, I think we have, um, a little bit of background here, um, the town, um, in, and the past has waived this fee, um, and I just, uh, because of the uniqueness of the project, and it's for the public good. Um, I know that, um, I know that Beth's on the line, or Beth was.
I am, I'm here.
Hi, Beth, how are you?
Hi, I'm fine, thanks.
Welcome, um, I think in the past we've done this, uh, for the congregational church. Shawna, is there any extra information to be provided for this or, um, on this memo?
No, I think that pretty much sums it up, um, there have been other projects in town, um, small and large, that 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 we've waived the fees for, this is probably one of the higher dollar amounts, but certainly not the highest.
Okay, the fiscal impact being two thousand dollars, which is fifteen hundred plus two hundred and fifty per unit. Um, but we have, um, we have the request to waive the fee by Habitat for Humanity. And Beth has sent us a letter, Beth, do you wanna speak to this at all, at this point?
Sure, I can do that, um, so this is, as has been indicated, um, a waiver that's been requested in the past and has been given. We're very appreciative, because while it's not an unusual request, we do understand it's unusual and unprecedented time, so we're greatly appreciative. Um, and very cogn- So we're greatly appreciative and very cognizant of municipal impacts. We're also, of course, facing similar experiences. This is for the project that will go before the ZBA on June 18th at George Ryder Road South. And we're very excited to move this along and add these units to the SHI list for Chatham.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Jeff, your hand was raised.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I moved that the board waived the zoning board of appeals application fee for Habitat for Humanity's 11 George Ryder Road South 40B project.
You have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
That was Jeff, I mean, Peter?
Yes.
Any further discussion from the board?
Just one comment, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
I think Habitat for Humanity and what, what the housing that we're gonna have is something that, that is important to us even after COVID-19, maybe even more so. So I believe it is in the public good that it should be approved.
Great, thank you. Any remote participants would like to weigh in on this matter? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna take a roll call for the vote. All those in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, the fee has been waived.
Thank, thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work. Okay, so the next item, we're zooming right along. Closeout proposal for fiscal year 2020 senior tax work off property tax relief program. And that's the Council on Aging Director, Mandy Speakman, can give us an overview of the, of the project and what we're being asked of tonight. Mandy, are you on?
I'm here. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mandy Speakman, Director of the Council on Aging. Just as a quick reminder and overview, the tax work off program operates in Chatham on the fiscal year, and there are 20 slots for participants to each work 62 and a half hours to earn them a $500 credit on their property tax bill. We find ourselves in unusual circumstances as we come to the end of the fiscal year. There are a number of positions that do their work entirely in the spring. 62 and a half hours does go rather quickly, so typically, that's very feasible. In your packet, I've given you a breakdown of the 19 participants that were placed prior to the beginning of COVID. I have a couple of updates for you. So in the week since this agenda report was written for your packet, we've had some more hours submitted. So as of today, we still have 19 participants placed in the program. The total number of hours that have been worked to date is up to 719 and a half. The total number of hours volunteered to date over and above the required hours is up to 279.75 hours. So the total number of hours worked in this program for the town this fiscal year is up to 999.25. So if we took those 19 participants and maxed them out, the total number of hours worked for the town would come to 1,187.5 hours. So depending on how you look at it, if you look at just the straight hours, we're about 468 hours away from completion. When you look at the total hours worked, straight hours, plus the volunteer hours, we're much closer to that total. The funds for this are allocated and planned for in the FY '20 budget already, so there would be no fiscal impact to the town. There is no way to project out what the total hour will be by June 30th, although I know that some participants are able to still work in some of the departments doing, they do outside work, so they're able to continue. And I've heard from other tax work off department heads and supervisors that there may still be the possibility of utilizing their participants. So it's, we're in flux, but I just always like to remind the community that this program really has two main missions. One is, it really provides a wonderful opportunity for civic engagement and gives citizens the opportunity to get into the town departments and really understand the inner workings of the town. And it also provides property tax relief. So, so it is a financial relief program. So there you go. There's my quick overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mandy, for that complete overview. Any questions or comments for Mandy from the board? Dean?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mandy. I just, I'm trying to understand the numbers allowing for what you just gave us. On, in your cover memo, you do say that you have to work, as I understand it, each person has to work 62 and a half hours?
Correct.
Aye. And when you show the hours completed, and you show that, for example, four participants, zero to less than 10, one from 10 to 20, how does that compute with the 62 and a half? I'm not understanding.
So I have, I'm looking at an updated spreadsheet as of today. So I have three participants that are at zero hours, that one has the, a high degree of likelihood of doing some hours this month, the other two are a question mark. I no longer have anyone else in that under 10-hour category. The other participants have been able to work to increase their hours beyond 10 hours. So it's, it's constantly, it's constantly in motion because people are still working.
But no, only one appears to be, four appear to, as of your, state of your memo, it's to have worked 62 and a half hours or more. Am I reading that correctly?
You are reading that correctly. And that information is a week old, so I apologize, because in an effort to get you the information in a timely way for your packet, that was, that was, that was correct at the time. So now we are up to one, two, three, four, five. I now have five people who have completed all of their hours, and four more who are just about to cross the finish line for completing those hours.
And if we did not have the COVID-19 problem, by June 30th, each of these 19 people would have reached 62 and a half hours?
Yes, always barring unexpected medical issues, and every once in a while, I have somebody sell their home and no longer qualify at the last moment. But yes, if we were not in this time of COVID, there was a plan, the departments and the supervisors had a plan for utilizing these folks during the spring.
Now, in your memo, you also say that two were, have been prevented from working any hours since March 17th. Is that down to one now, from what you said a moment ago?
I'm sorry, TWO, TWO capitals is an acronym for tax work off.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Sorry about that, too many acronyms.
Number two, thank you. But you said one, one person has no hours at all?
Actually, three of the 19, but I've been told by one supervisor that one of those, there is a plan for outside work, and that it's highly likely one of those folks will still be able to complete their hours.
So if we were to vote this in, would the other two get the credit? Get the tax credit?
If you were to vote my proposal as I presented it, then yes, the other two people would still get their tax credit.
Thank you.
Okay. Dean, you're finished, you're sort of breaking up. Okay.
Yeah, I, I just thank Mandy.
I thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, so Mandy, the, the ones that haven't completed any, any of the, of the hours, and
it was, and it would be proposed that they would probably complete those hours by, by June 30th, had there been a regular, normal sort of scenario going on and not COVID-19? Are you confident?
These are all, so all, I'm looking at all three of these participants that have done zero hours to date. These are all returning participants who have worked in this program multiple years. So they have a history of the same pattern of working in these departments and completing their 62 and a half hours in, you know, two weeks. 62 and a half hours goes very quickly. So these departments save up and have projects for these, ready for these people at a particular time, and had, had planned to implement it that way. And of course, we were all taken off track.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Anybody wanna, any further discussion from the board, or anybody want to offer up a motion on this in any particular manner?
This is Peter, I just want to make a comment. I was concerned about the people that were, that had zero. I appreciate what Randy, Mandy just said, they've, they've been in the program multiple times, and they, they participated. I mean, I kind of get it. I hate, you know, you hate to give something to someone who hasn't done anything, but this is a little, maybe a little bit different circumstance. It's 19 people, that's $9,500, which is still under our budget. They can't do it. I'm gonna make in a statement, you can say yes or no. The, the only reason that they didn't get their 62 is because of COVID-19. And there were, there were projects available for them that they most likely would have been able to complete. I guess that's correct, right? You said that before.
That is correct.
Madam Chair, I have another, if Peter's finished, I have another question.
Dean?
So what, what, are, is there a financial test that makes them eligible, or, because you do use the word 20 eligible participants?
So it's...
Well, is, is there a need issue here to qualify to participate?
So there is not financial means testing for this program, and that was a very conscious decision. So eligibility has to do with being 60 by June 1st, being a, you know, year-round resident property owner, the prop, you know, we question, we get information if the property is held in trust to ensure that the trustee is the one paying the taxes, and so on. Eligibility has no means testing, and that was done after some careful consideration. This program exists across the state of Massachusetts and is widely taken advantage of, and it's about 50/50. About 50% of the towns participating do have a means test, and the other 50% don't. And the, the idea behind that for us in Chatham was to not create a program that had any stigma attached to it. So if you are in the tax work off program, there certainly is a financial relief component to it, but it was really allowed us to push the civic engagement part of it. So that's, you know, these, these regulations or the, the guidelines for this program are always up for discussion, but as of now, that's how the program is run.
And are these, are these essentially retirees?
Yes. Well, no, actually. So I don't have the data in front of me, but I know all of these people, so I would say the majority are retirees, but there are some people who are still working, and that this program helps them supplement their income.
Well, the reason I'm asking these questions in light of what Peter just enquired about as well, is to try to see if there's some analogy to what the federal government did with the CARES Act when the, when the crisis first started, and the, the Congress and the President came through with the CARES Act and provided basically stimulus money to people who were unable to go to work, because their offices had been shut down, their business places had been shut down. And I guess with this explanation and that analogy, I'm, I'm okay with supporting it. I, you know, I don't like giving somebody something for nothing, but they're not the ones responsible for it. It's the crisis that intervened, otherwise they would have been on the job doing the work. We're talking about a $500 credit for, you know, a relatively small number of people. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, you had your hand up?
I did, Madam Chair. You know, in light of the really unique circumstances that we're faced with, with COVID-19, I, I would make a motion to consider waiving, or to waive the uncompleted hours, to allow the place participants to receive the full tax credit for fiscal year '20, knowing that I can do that comfortably, and this isn't part of the motion, but I can do that comfortably knowing that if we didn't have COVID, and folks were able to get there, they would have put their hours in. And in fact, I think the three that haven't done hours probably would have done in this month, and I suspect they're pretty, you know, assiduous about so doing. So that is my motion, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second on Dean's motion?
Jeff's motion, second.
Was Cory second?
Sure.
Okay. All right, any further discussion from the board? Cory?
Just a real civil observation. If you look at the $500 credit, and you have to do the 62 and a half hours worth of work, you're only getting a credit of $8 an hour.
Right.
Which is well below our Massachusetts minimum wage of $1,275 right now. So just a little, little observation, a little math there.
Okay.
I support this, I'm fine with it.
Okay, great. All right, before we vote, any remote participants that have any comments or are discussion on this matter? All right, hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, motion passes. Yes.
I just wanted to note, I just received a text message from the chairman of the Finance Committee saying that he would approve what we just did, so.
Great, everybody.
Give us the chairman.
All right. All right, so, thanks, Mandy. The next order of business is a declaration of water supply conservation and, and town water conservation measures. The Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Dunkinson, and the DPW Director, Tom Temple. So, welcome, and I don't know who wants to go first. But I look, I see Dr. Dunkinson.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in here real quick. As the board's probably aware, this is a fairly routine item that we're doing here. We've done this every year for the last couple of years. Interestingly enough, this year, even though we had a, you know, a fairly wet spring, and you know, the expectation is that, that uses was gonna be down because people weren't able to come to the Cape, we actually saw the exact opposite. We saw usage go up early in the season, and we, you know, taking into the fact that restaurants have been closed, and schools are closed, hotels and motels are closed, and we didn't do our normal spring flushing this year like we normally would, just because of the effects of COVID-19 and staffing and whatnot, we still saw a fairly significant spike in water use. So we thought it was prudent to bring this to the board, to have you go ahead and declare state of water supply conservation. We're proposing the same criteria that we've done the last couple of years. Odd-even watering, it would be in effect from June 5th, which will be this Friday through October 2nd, and the same limitations on outdoor sprinkler systems as well. We did include some water use data from so far this year as compared to prior years. Interestingly enough, if you look at the graph for May of, of this year versus May of last year by day, it actually doesn't show it as bad as you might expect comparing the two years. But when you take into account the restaurants being closed, no flushing and all that, the numbers are fairly significantly higher this year, considering we're just about where we were for the last year. But we didn't have all these other things going on, and I think that's a reflection. As we've all seen, there's a lot more folks, you know, seasonal second homeowners in town, a lot more irrigation systems have been running, especially the last couple of leagues, when we really haven't had any substantial rainfall, and we're just going into the summer season. So that's why we wanted to bring this to you. We don't have a recommendation, obviously, from the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee for reasons that you've already alluded to, but we thought at the staff level, we'd bring this to you for your consideration.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the county's collecting some of the water data, or the commission is, water usage data for the Cape, and it seems like... water usage data for the Cape, and it seems like the ones that have come in, that there's been some substantial increases across the, across the Cape in water usage. So it's gotta be people here, that's for sure. I saw Jeff's hand up first and then Dean. So Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Dr. Dunkinson, just so I'm reading the data correctly, cause I, and I'm generally or philosophically certainly in favor of this, but, but the way I read the data from January through April, we are pumping less than we pumped last year to the tune of nine million gallons. But we, our monthly total from January to May, April, I should say, is sixty-eight million versus last year is seventy-eight million. So I just wanna make sure I'm reading it correctly. Now, we may have more wells online, we may, you know, there may be other issues, but I didn't understand your earlier comments about how our utilization is skyrocketed so much. Maybe I'm missing something if you.
No, you're absolutely correct. And that, that, you know, when I, when I was putting this memo together and reviewing these data, the, the figure, the tables, it was a little bit of a quandary, cause you're absolutely right. Through April of this year, we were actually down compared to the year before. However, when you start to look strictly at May, we're just about at the same point in May as we were last year. We're actually above where we were last year by a small amount. And so when you look at that and you take into account the fact that we didn't do any flushing, which is roughly a half million gallons, restaurants have been closed, you know, hotels, motels have been closed. You're like, well, jeez, if all those things had happened as they normally would, we'd be way above the level for May compared to last year. So it was really during the month of May that we really started seeing this change.
I just have a quick follow-up as well, Bob. Knowing how wet the spring has been, is the aquifer in good shape?
The aquifer is in very good shape. If you look at some of the local ponds, they're way higher this year than they've been in other years. So we don't have any, we don't have any issue with the supply. The new water treatment plan is online and functioning well. So right now, but we're just trying to preserve that infrastructure, preserve that aquifer. You know, if we do get into a drought season, and as I said, the last couple of weeks have been much drier than normal. You know, we just wanna make sure we're prepared. And as I, you know, as we've talked about in previous years, this is just a good thing to do anyway, to prefer, preserve both the aquifer as well as preserve, preserving our infrastructure by not overtaxing it. Even though we have the water treatment plant, you know, we don't wanna be running those wells eighteen, twenty, twenty-four hours a day like we've had to in previous years. So conservation is always a good thing.
Yeah, I, I, just a comment. I'm, I'm fully supportive. I just wanted to make sure I was reading the data correctly. And, and as in past years, I think it's in general a very good thing to do. So I, I will absolutely vote for it. So thank you, Bob.
Madam Chair?
Peter, I think she stepped away. Would you mind taking over for the meeting?
Ah, sure. That was Dean, I believe. Right?
I didn't say Peter.
I think it's, is it Tom Temple that just asked?
Yes, I can't, I can't raise my hand. I'm sorry. Just to give you, just to give you a little update, from the figures you have in your packet from the twenty-seventh, where it says we're twenty-seven percent less than last year for the, the twenty-seventh. Moving forward, the last four days, it was a fifty percent increase, a seventeen percent increase, a seventeen percent increase. And on the thirty-first, we had a hundred and eleven percent increase. We went from negative one-point-two percent where your, your schedule showed for the twenty-seventh to five, five-point-four percent higher than the previous year. So we used one-point-nine-seven million gallons in those and making up that difference for the last four days.
Thank you, Tom. That, that's actually helpful. Thank you. More people are down. There's no doubt about it. There's no doubt.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay.
Okay, who else had their hand up? Dean, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I would note for the record that we are meeting right now as the Water and Sewer Commissioners. So if we take a vote, it's in that context. I wonder if a lot of the increase in addition to the fact that we do have more people and we have had more people the last couple of months because of the COVID crisis, I wonder if a lot of the increase in water usage, notwithstanding that businesses and restaurants have been closed, reflects the fact that people are honoring the CDC guidelines and washing their hands a lot more.
Yeah, you bet. And they're home. Yeah.
I mean, and I mean that genuinely. I just a question. So the, the, the proposal is the same as has been in place the last couple of years. And just to clarify for the record, that the, this applies, and I think we should read it when we vote, when we have a motion. This applies, Bob, only to public water usage, water of the, on the public water supply. If you have a private irrigation system or if you have a private well, you're not obligated to follow it. So although we certainly would encourage people, it's all coming from the same source. Is that correct?
That's correct. This only applies to users of the municipal water system, but we would strongly encourage people in private wells to meet these guidelines as well.
What are we gonna do for signage? Because we're using some of the electronic signs for, for the COVID thing. I mean, we have one big sign that says masks and water conservation.
We, we have twelve signs that, that are A-frame signs that we put out throughout the community on all the major roadways. We can certainly free up at least one, one sign to let people know in along twenty-eight that the water restrictions are in place.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion. I know others may haven't spoken yet, but I'll, I'll throw a motion on the table if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
I move that we, that the Board of Selectmen declare a state of water supply conservation in accordance with the general bylaws, Chapter two sixty-one, Section two sixty-one dash four, and implementation of the following voluntary conservation measures in accordance with Section two sixty-one dash five. One, state of water supply conservation for the period June five, twenty-twenty through October second, twenty-twenty. Two, outdoor watering at odd-numbered addresses restricted to odd-numbered calendar days. Outdoor watering at even-numbered addresses restricted to even-numbered calendar days. Three, outdoor watering limited to one inch or less per watering event. Four, outdoor watering limited to period six P M. to twelve A M. midnight, except for in-ground irrigation systems, which are limited to twelve midnight to six A M. Five, no washing of sidewalks or driveways. That's my motion.
Thank you, Dean. Do I have a second?
Second.
And that was from Peter. Any further discussion from the board?
That was Jeff.
Oh, that was Jeff. Thank you. Any further discussions for the board? Okay, any, any comments or, or discussion on this matter from the remote participants? Hearing none, I will take a roll. Cory?
Hi.
Hi.
Dean?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
And the chair says aye. All right. Thank you, Dr. Dunkinson and Director Temple. Thank you very much. All right. The next is an updates. First item is Fish Pier Observation Deck Project, Public Access to Fish Pier Complex, Direct Boat Retail Sale Request. And then Trap Dock Project, Dredging Beach Nourishment and Town on Dredge Projects. Before we get going, I just want to say that I filed a disclosure statement in regard to Item A, the Direct Boats Retail Sales Request. I just wanna let you know that I work as a manager of a fishermen's cooperative that actually does that sort of program in Chatham. And there could be a possibility that some of the members that I participate with would want to do this kind of work at the pier. So I will sit in, as Cory did last week, on the main street as a matter of, of somebody to ask information about the program, but I'll abstain from any voting on the matter. So move forward on this. Fish Pier Observation Deck Project. Is it Dr. Dunkinson or is Stuart making the, making the first? I'll start with Dr. Dunkinson. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I will give you a quick update on where we stand on the Fish Pier Observation Deck Project. And then we can take any questions you may have on that. So let me just share my screen with you here. Can everybody see the presentation, hopefully?
Yep, I see it. Yes, I'll set.
All right. So I've just got a couple of slides here to kinda show you where we are, where we, where we've been since the last update in January. So the top photo shows the Fish Pier project as it was in January. Pretty well completed, except for the stairs on the south side and the stairs on the north side. And you can see in the April twenty-ninth photo that the stairs, in fact, were now completed. And so all the other things in terms of the new doors, the vents, and everything else was likewise completed. Moving around to the east face of the pier, the top photo again was January, the bottom photo is April. Not a whole lot of change in that side, except for the signs regarding the fueling, which had been up on the, up on the, the eve of the building. Were now moved off, onto the deck in compliance with the Fire Protection Code. And then moving around to the north side, that's probably where you'll see the biggest change between January and April. The decking had just been put in place. The railings were not completed. The stairs were, were just being started. And then when you jump down to April, you can see that everything is now complete. The new stairway is in place. The elevator or the vertical personal lift is now in place. And for all intents and purposes, the project's been completed with the bollards around the, the ADA ramp that's going in, in place. So where we are today in terms of things that need to be completed, we're waiting on a couple of things. And let me just drop here quickly to the next set of slides. These are the north side stairways, and you can see the white handrails for ADA compliance that were added to the stairway last week. So that is now being completed. So right now, what we're waiting for is the handrail around the ADA ramp to the personal lift. That will be completed by the end of this week. We spoke to the company that was fabricating that. They had it all fabricated last week, and it was just a question of whether or not they would be able to have time to get down and get it installed. And they ensured us that by the end of this week, that will be in place. So the only real remaining item then is getting the elevator system operational. And to do that requires that we have a phone line. We looked at the option of a cell phone connection or a hardwired connection. And ultimately, because of issues with cell phone reception at the Fish Pier, we had to settle for the hard-wired connection. The wire has been run from the electrical room at the upper, the second floor of the Fish Pier out to the elevator, and Verizon is scheduled to be on site tomorrow to activate that phone line. As you can imagine, trying to get them scheduled with COVID-19 has been a bit of a challenge, but we've been able to get them hopefully here tomorrow. And at that point, the elevator supplier will be able to come back, make the final connections for that emergency phone line into the elevator itself, and then schedule an inspection with the State Elevator Board. Obviously, you know, the elevator can't be inspected and approved until the phone line's in, the handrail is in on the ADA ramp, and, and those kinds of things. So hopefully, by the end of this week, all those major work will be completed. And then the elevator inspection, we've been told that the state elevator folks are still scheduling inspections in the field and generally responding within a week or two. So hopefully, we'll have them out here shortly to get the elevator inspected and back online. There's a few minor items with the contractor on the punch list, only about three or four items remaining. Some caulking, some plugs and some of the decking material and those kinds of things. And, and when we had our progress meeting with them last Thursday, they indicated they'd be out this week to kinda finish up those minor items. One other item that remains to be finished up was just extending the fire suppression system under the north and south stairwells. They were, the company that was doing that was unable to do that before, with the stairs not completed. Now that they've been done, they can get out here and finish that work. There is a bit of a discrepancy between the general contractor and the sub doing that work. They have been put on notice by the general contractor that if they didn't finish by a certain date, the general contractor was gonna bring in somebody else. So we're still waiting for that. Probably tomorrow, we will get confirmation that that has been done or not. Moving on to where we are in the budget, I just did a quick kinda broad-brush update. The original contract amount was one-point-four million dollars. There have been roughly two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, I shouldn't say roughly, there have been two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars in change orders. Some of these due to changed conditions, you know, as, as I'm sure everybody's aware, once you start working on buildings, you find things that you didn't expect to find, and that was a number of the cases here, as well as there were some changes requested by the town to improve the project overall. So far to date, there have been eleven pay requisitions from the contractor totaling approximately one-point-six million. We're withholding or we're holding eighty-two thousand dollars in retainage. And we've assessed liquidated damages so far of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. One thing to keep in mind is liquidated damages go all the way back to the end of December. We haven't added to those recently because the contractor has not applied for payment. So generally, you know, even though they've continued to accrue, they haven't been applied, so they're not reflected in this thirty-eight thousand dollars. So so far to date, we've paid the contractor one-point-five million. So we have roughly a hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars left to finish the project, including the retainage, and approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars if you don't include the retainage. On the engineering side, the engineering contract for this project as a whole, including the design and, and construction phase services, was approximately four-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. We've paid roughly thirty-eight thousand, and so we have a balance remaining of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. So with that, that's all I have for the slides on the Fish Pier. I do have some slides on the Trap Dock Project, and I could move into that right now, or I could stop and take questions on the, just the Fish Pier.
Why don't we just take the questions on the Fish Pier, if that's okay, Bob?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. Questions on the Fish Pier from the, I can't see anybody, cause the numbers are still up, so you can't raise your hand. Just, so Jeff, do you have any questions for Dr. Bob?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, so is the deal, is the deal on the lift that we can't, say, say everything gets done, but we're still waiting for a state inspection for the lift. Can, can we still, are we still not able to open the Observation Deck?
We would not be able to open the Observation Deck, cause one of the goals of it was trying to make it ADA compliant. So yeah, so that's why we've been really kinda pushing Verizon to get out there and get that done and get it connected up as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I, I'm more concerned with getting the state down here to inspect it. Verizon, hopefully, will be there tomorrow, you said, but if you had, that sounds to me, what you said is that it'd be in one or two or three weeks, I think, is what I heard, for the state can schedule the inspection. Typically, those take a long time, to be honest with you, in my, in my experience.
Yeah, we've, we've, the engineer or the contractor has contracted the State Elevator Board, and they've been fairly responsive. Even with COVID-19, they're still responding, even for, you know, obviously, they have to for existing elevators, but even for new objects like this one. So we're optimistic that they're gonna respond fairly quickly.
Good for you, Dr. Bob. I'm glad you're optimistic. Anyway, it's a handsome-looking deck. I know it's built like a, it's built, it's extremely rugged. But boy, is it late. Anyway, I'll, I'll hush.
Okay. Any other board members wanna weigh in on this? Cory, Peter, who, Cory?
Yeah, I mean, no, it, it's solid. It, I, I, there's no two ways about that. It's been a very, very long process. Even, even I think we've been very kind in referring to some of this as a punch list on some of the stuff, but it's, it's, hopefully, there's a light at the end of this tunnel. It's gonna be there for quite some time. It better be. And just looking forward to getting it back open and figuring out what the best use of it is, because I think there's going to be some conversations down the road. But I'll, you know, go into that too much. You know, there's a lot of activity down at the Fish Pier and looking forward to kind of getting things back and rolling in the most safe manner for both our fleet and the visitors. So no real further comments.
Yeah, in light of the current situation, it not being open isn't a bad thing right now. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I agree with the construction and the process that you went through. I feel for you, especially on that. I think we have a couple of lessons learned that have already been implemented having to deal with. I mean, when you think about a freestanding deck, you'd kind of think it's a no-brainer, but it was harder than some of the really tough stuff that we had. And there are reasons for that. Have you, I think, I think the type of contracting is something that you guys are looking at or you're not using something like that on a trap dock. But the second question is, are you getting any pushback from the contractor? There were some public statements that he made, his lawyer made back in October, November. I haven't seen anything lately as, how was that relationship?
You know, we haven't seen anything from the contractor recently. You know, I spoke with town council a week ago on, you know, what we need to do to kind of close this project out. I suspect, you know, we're going to have a sit-down meeting with the contractor, probably through a Teams meeting or Zoom to go over where we are, obviously because of liquidated damages, you know, that we are imposing and, and you know, they're going to want those. So we'll have that discussion with them and, and you know, hopefully we'll come to some agreement between the parties that everybody can walk away from the table. Maybe not totally happy, but you know, we can avoid litigation and all that kind of stuff because neither side wins in that scenario. So, but yeah, we're going to have that sit-down meeting with them and hopefully close this thing out in a way that everybody is satisfied, if you will.
Thank you. Dean, did you have some comments?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Bob. With respect to the numbers you showed on the last slide, the retainage, there was, there was a balance with retainage and balance without retainage. So what, what does that mean? Do we, we have the right to not leave the retainage over? How does that work?
Generally, if the, you know, retainage is held to ensure the contractor completes all the work. If the contractor did not complete some portion of it, we could hold that money back and then, you know, hire somebody else to do it. The only thing, the only area where we may think about doing that is to get the fire suppression system completed if the contractor's current subcontractor doesn't come through and, and finished it. And so we've identified how much that, that work would be worth and we would basically withhold that. Other than that, retainage would be given to the contractor provided they've completed everything and finished the punch list. And basically, retainage is, is the remedy that the town has to ensure the punch list gets completed. And so far, the contractors finished pretty much everything that was on the punch list. As I said, with the exception of two or three minor items that they were indicated to us, they were going to be down this week to finish up, so.
So assuming those, those minor items are finished and assuming the fire suppression system is, is completed by whomever and assuming we get the elevator inspections, does that mean at that point, when that's all done, it can be open for the public? I suppose our building commissioner has to issue some kind of a certificate of occupancy or whatever. Is that, what I'm getting at is, is we likely to see that sometime over the summer? And what are the plans or are we making plans for how to deal with the public access to that given social distancing requirements?
Well, that, you know, that's what I think the chairman was alluding to earlier. Yes, so two steps would have to happen. One, we'd need to get the building inspector or the contractor's request a certificate of occupancy from the building inspector. He can't really do that until the elevator is, is installed and inspected by the state, then he could request the CO. Once we have the CO and then depending on what kind of COVID-19 restrictions are still in place, obviously if it's a limitation of only, you know, groups of 10, you know, there isn't a lot of reason to open the deck because as you all, I'm sure are well aware, we get a lot more than 10 people on that deck and the new deck is built to handle even larger numbers. So you know, it'd be very difficult to kind of have somebody down there, you know, with one of those clickers in their hands saying, all right, you know, there's 10 people up there now, one person comes down, they can let another person go up. So hopefully, you know, we're going to see some relaxation of those, you know, group limits over the coming weeks here as we move into, you know, COVID phase two and phase three and whatnot. That obviously would make it easier for us and you know, if we have some kind of a higher limit, we'll have to address it. Maybe we will end up with somebody down there with a clicker. You know, even if it's groups of 50 or 100 or whatever, you know, if we can't open the deck to its full capacity. So, you know, unfortunately with the whole COVID thing, we're just not exactly sure how that's going to pan out over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I guess a bigger question too would be, you know, a budget, you know, whether we could have the resources to be able to handle that, that sort of thing as well. Any other questions for Dr. Bob on the observation deck? Do we have any questions from the remote participants?
Shereen, can you hear me? This is Stuart.
Yes, Stuart, go right ahead.
The, one thing to consider as you consider these issues, most notably the observation deck, is when it is ready to open, the crowds are going to be coming to the Fish Pier irrespective of whether the deck is open or not, like they did last year. And so we're going to have groups of people and we're going to have to manage that in some way. So it, it would be my, you know, I just want people to think about what happens if we don't open the deck. It doesn't solve the problem of crowding at the Fish Pier. It may even exacerbate it. So food for thought.
Okay, well taken. Actually, you know, looking back at last year, nothing stopped people from going down to the Fish Pier, that was for sure. Even with all the chaos and it was very difficult to manage a construction site and, you know, crowds of people wanting to see seals and fishing boats. Okay, so any other questions from the remote participants or Dr. Dunkinson? Right, thanks, Bob. We'll ask you to weigh in on the trap dock in a few minutes as we go through these items, if you're, if you're okay with that.
That's fine.
Okay. The next portion of this is public access to the Fish Pier complex. It sort of segues, segues a little bit into a couple of discussions. Basically, I guess, working off the premise of the Harbor Masters comments just prior. And also the idea that we've asked Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, you know, has requested to meet and we've approved them to meet. Is this an item that we want to continue discussing? Give our opinions and allow them to come back with some recommendations on the program? Or do we want to strictly do a blanket statement or plan at this moment? I guess that's how I wanted to pose it for you all as we move forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd be inclined to let the Lydia's Cove Committee weigh in first with the, with consultation by them with the Harbor Master and Dr. Dunkinson. Because I don't think we're really in a position, I don't feel anyways, that we're in a position to provide some kind of prescription for what, a prescription for what they should be doing. There, Stuart raises some very legitimate questions about it. And it's more complicated than last year because of the COVID crisis. And I don't see that going away anytime soon. So since we've allowed the committee to meet and they'll have some other business as well, I think that's our next item. I think I would be inclined, rather than devoting our energy tonight to try to come up with a plan, just waiting to see what their recommendations are.
Any other thoughts? I see Jeff's hands up as well.
Yeah, no, I agree 100% with Sluckman Castro. I think we turf this to the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. Let them weigh in, let them deliberate with the Harbor Master and with Dr. Dunkinson and then come back to us with their thoughts and hopefully their recommendations. So I would look forward to hearing from them. You know, I spent a lot of time down there, so I know how congested it can get. I'll be really looking forward to hearing their thoughts. Thank you.
And I, I think that we can understand that our crowds will be down, but this is one of the most popular places, you know, in Chatham and a big draw for a lot of people. Corey, did you have anything to share?
No, I mean, I'm perfectly comfortable letting Aunt Lydia's Cove, you know, review this and weigh in on it. I mean, we have, you know, a commercial entity and a balance of a, one of the biggest draws in town for visitors and residents. So it's always going to be a very dicey, tricky, you know, site to manage. So I'm happy to turf this over to Aunt Lydia's Cove and follow up in a very short window back to the board. It'd be my preference.
Yeah, I think it would be something that would have to be met because we, we need an action plan. We certainly do. You know, and so I think we need to, you know, I don't know what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks with the next phases opening up. Peter, did you want to share anything? You have anything to share?
I would agree with everything that was previously said, especially with Corey's prior comment that we need something pretty quickly. And I, I understand, you know, the, I'm not sure it's part of it, but when the request was put in to do a test, that, that, they also looked to have something done pretty quickly. And I think the Harbor Master agrees and I, and he does bring up a number of concerns that are best handled by Aunt Lydia's Cove. So, thank you.
I think for some direction, a plan in place would be good. Also, we need to, we need to hear from, I think, from staff or from, from Jill, what resources are needed in order for that to be a safe place based on whatever plan comes forward. And because we're going to need to implement a plan, there's, you know, we can't go back and forth. We're going to need to have some pretty strong action plans. I'd rather have it a decision that's made quickly rather than not. So the consensus is, we don't need to take a vote on that. I don't think that we just direct that to Aunt Lydia's Cove. Jill, does that, does that work for you?
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the next, which is direct boat retail sales request. I'm going to turn this portion of discussion over to Peter to lead. I'm available for any, to answer any technical questions about, about the program or anything, but I'm going to let, and I will be abstaining from voting on any matter if any actions take forward. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Is this going to, are we, are we considering this an app? Let me ask you, Madam Chair, an applicant, Nick Muto comes to be talking or is this something that the, that our Harbor Master should discuss first?
Probably a Harbor Master. We, as you see, there was a proposal in here from an app of, it wasn't really an application. It was a proposal because there is no application for this process. But then there was a letter from the chairman of Aunt Lydia's Cove saying that they'd rather discuss this program and bring back recommendations. So I think the chairman is on the call, on the meeting, Harbor Master, as well as Mr. Muto.
Yeah, I saw both of them on there before. So let me go to Stuart, if you're available, if you'd like to start.
Sure. What's being proposed specifically at the Fish Pier at this time is for fin fishermen and scalpers to direct sell their product to the general public. They are not, as I understand it, permitted to transport their product and deliver it to a home or meet somebody somewhere and sell their product. They would need a dealer's permit, which has some specific criteria associated with it, like refrigerated trucks and things like that. The Division of Marine Fisheries has permitted the sale of fish product, finfish product directly from boats. The issue at the Fish Pier is the regulations don't recognize that type of activity. You know, the Fish Pier is specifically designed for the offloading of product in, in some volume. The fueling of vessels, the icing of vessels, the repair of boats. That sort of commercial activity is what the Fish Pier was designed to do. It's, it has a limited capacity in dockage. There's, there's 80 to 100 permits that are issued to work out of the Fish Pier. So it is, as you folks know, typically a very busy, busy site, one of the busiest, if not the busiest in town. So the proponent has proposed that we do some test cases or that he be permitted to do some test cases through, let's say, the middle of June to see how viable this is on both the facility's part and perhaps his part. So while I don't specifically oppose the test cases, as I issued, as I said in my email, it would require some regulatory changes associated with the direct sales is the need for the seller to tie up their boat to what is limited dock space. So they can sell direct sales to the public. And that, that is not, that's not permitted. So some off-hour test cases, let, I was thinking, you know, evening, late afternoon, evening hours or very early morning when the Fish Pier is still being utilized, but it's not being utilized to its fullest capacity. It's something that the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee and the board can, can debate or can think about. But I, you know, I don't think it'll be shocking to anybody to, to explain that direct sales from fishing boats during the in-season, let's say, the middle of June to the middle of September, is something that just, the facility just won't handle that additional activity at this time. So, and most importantly, the regulations currently just don't, not only do they not allow it, they just never envisioned this. So we would have to have the Cove Committee come in and debate this and get their input. I did push forward a staffing plan to the town a couple of weeks ago. So that's, that's in place for you folks to take a look at. I think, I don't want to dwell on it, but it is really going to be essential that the observation deck be opened, whether it be in some limited, limited capacity or, or whatever. But we, half of the reason we built the observation deck was to get the public out of the parking lots. So they're not underneath the fishermen's feet and the unloading area, really creating a big safety problem. So the whole, when the observation deck is completed, the whole intent was to focus the public up onto that, up onto that facility for them to see the view, the seals, the fishing boats unloading. So that's why adding another activity to the bulkhead area is something that certainly during the in-season, we would want to avoid.
Thank you, Stuart. Mr. Muto, Nick, do you want to make a couple of comments before I go to the board?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. First of all, I appreciate this being taken under consideration by the board. I've, I've done some of these direct sales. You know, we had a, we had a trip offshore to George's Bank. We came in, we sold finfish right off the boat at Whichmere Harbor. It was, it was wildly successful. The people loved it. And it was, it's, it's something that I really think we need to explore at the Fish Pier.
it's something that I really think we need to explore at the fish pier itself. It's a tremendous opportunity for the, for the fishing community. I have a, I have a text, Jared Bennett, who's also doing direct sales right now, who's out fishing, submitted to me a comment. He's in support of it. He's also a member of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. He's, he's had tremendous success with it also at Harwich. He's now, since we've been removed from Harwich as of June 1st, you know, he's going to be looking for another place to sell his scallops. And it's kind of outlined in the reasons, you know, I outlined the reasons and are somewhat of our plan for this trial test at the fish pier. I think, you know, it's something that we need immediately to at least try, being that it is off-season, it is, you know, it is less busy down there right now. It's, it's too much of an opportunity on the fishermen's end for us really to drag our feet on because there's so much extra money being left on the table if we're forced to sell just directly to our buyers right now. So again, I, I'd probably like to open, you know, if you have any questions of me and, and how we operate down there and how we move people through in our process, instead of me kind of rambling on about why I think it will work. I, I think that would be a little bit better, I guess, but.
Okay, well, you know, thank you. You know what I'll do first, I think, is Mr. Feeny, Doug, are you on? From the Chair of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee?
Yes, I am.
You have any comments? And then I can bring it around to the board for questions. Thanks.
I, I actually do have one comment. You were discussing earlier that there, there was an urgency to come up, I believe, with a, a safety protocol down there. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, there was a comment about, well, safety protocol on, on Aunt Lydia's Cove and what, how are, how are we going to handle all the people that are going to be showing up?
All right. So that, that does not, as of right now, exist. That's something that you will be working on as the Board of Selectmen? Not for selling off the boat, just general public being down at the fish pier.
Well, it is something we'll be working on, but it also goes through, I guess, I would think, when we were discussing it, I thought we were going to, it would be part of what Aunt Lydia's Cove would be looking at also, or with the staff.
Okay. So I, I mean, that's, that's my only concern is the, is the safety. But as far as an off-hours thing, which we were discussing, I think between the people that are on Aunt Lydia's Cove and that you're talking to now, that, you know, we all agree that this would be a good idea. We just haven't sat down and had the time to discuss times, how this is going to work, but I pretty much can say that we're all in agreement with it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, I, I got the impression too, from the way the Harbor Master wrote his letter, he's not against it. It's just, how are we going to do it if we can do it? And does it make, you know, does it make safety sense? So let me bring it back to the board. Anybody want to go first? Anybody have a hand up? Okay, Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Yeah, I, I'm very supportive of the fishermen. Spent a lot of time down the fish pier. I can understand why the fishermen would want to go direct to the consumer. I, I cannot imagine in any way, shape or form, how this could possibly work in the height of the summer. Someone can figure that out and tell me during, during operating hours and when boats are there stacked up and unloading and you throw in consumers milling about, looking to buy off the boat. I, I can't imagine how difficult that might be. So I really think, number one, I really want Aunt Lydia's Cove to, to get this first before we sit as a board and try to cogitate and come up with operating plans. It's not our job to come up with a, an operating recommendation, but we desperately need Aunt Lydia's Cove to weigh in with a series of operating recommendations, number one. Number two, I for one will be scratching my head if you say you can pull this off at the height of the summer because I don't believe it can happen. So those are my comments. I understand why. I understand it's going to be more economically advantaged for our fishermen, totally supportive of our fishing industry, but I just don't know how operationally and mechanically you pull this off in the height of the summer unless you do it wee hours of the morn or the very late hours at night. Those are my thoughts right now. I'm not so willing to do it unless you guys can come to some consensus, consensual recommendation on, on what you can do in a trial period. I'm hesitant to bless any trial period unless it's been blessed by you guys, knowing you can pull it off. So those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Okay, Corey?
Got it. No, um, this is, I completely understand the ask. These are unusual times. It's a, it's a mechanism for the fleet to, to, you know, sell their goods and, you know, some economical lifeline for them. I would want Aunt Lydia's Cove to definitely weigh in. There's no doubts about that. I also want to put a crystal clear proposal on the table because everything aside, safety around there needs to be the priority. So if we can come up with a plan that has, you know, I's dotted and the T's crossed for a pilot program, I would entertain it. I'm not going to bless it yet, but I would entertain it. But I'd want eagle eyes on that program because if anything, as the summer progresses, as, as Selectman Dyken said, it's a crazy, it, it's a, the volume picks up, even in, even in this COVID-19 pandemic world we're living in right now, I can see the volumes increasing there at this summer. So I would want eagle eyes on any program that would review it and, you know, keep an eye on it, that if it started to get a little bit out of hand, that we could pull the plug on it. So I, I'm, I'm open-minded to it. I, I understand the ask, but we have to be crystal clear that the safety measures are in place to, to make this even a possibility.
Okay, Dean?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I agree that this should go to the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee for analysis and a recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen, which they should do in consultation with the Harbor Master. And just to clarify the prior topic that Doug Feeny was asking about, we did, by consensus, refer the, the matter of public access to the fish pier to the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee as well. I'm looking at Stuart's memo to the Town Manager of May 27th, and he says, "The fish pier regulations do not allow direct sales from fishing boats to the general public. So if this is going to happen, we're going to have to modify those regulations and that would have to be part of the recommendation." He also says, "While I support the concept of direct sales from fishing vessels to the public, the current level of activity at the fish pier during the normal workday would prove unworkable with the added activity of direct sales." So things are extremely tight there. The situation this year is worse than it has been many years in the past because of the COVID situation. And so I think it's going to have to be very, very carefully analyzed. I'm not sure if it is workable. Stuart has asked that any test case be completed no later than June 25th. And Mr. Muto's memo or email talks about it lasting until June 15th. So they're presumably on the same, same page. But I just have, have a question maybe of Bob Deckard, if he's still on there. Is there any, is there any interaction here with respect to the LSE? I guess there are two LSEs of the fish pier in their business. Does this complicate things that this activity is permitted to go forward? Maybe Stuart could address that.
Sure. There, there are two fish companies, Red's Best of Boston and Martyr Seafood of New Bedford. Both of them primarily do volume sales in, really in large bulk. They don't, to my knowledge, have a local retail sales of any sort. So I don't think any direct sales would be interfering with them in any significant way. The, the fish market does, of course, do retail sales to the general public. What that impact would be, I'm, I'm not really sure. There, there, there are new business or it's not a new business there, but it certainly is new owners. So that may or may not have some impact to them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shereen, any comments?
No, I just, this program is not a new program. Direct sales from the boat have been occurring since the early 2000s, just not at the fish pier, obviously. One of the, just briefly, if you notice in the packet, I had reached out to Story Reed at the Division of Marine Fisheries to see if there could be any alternative plans in the works because to loosen regulations on this particular matter. And he said that they are in contact with the Department of Public Health and that they would get back to us within, you know, a matter of days. They may have some more questions because there's been a lot of outreach on that matter. So pending that kind of information, that's all I really have to share, unless anybody has any questions about the program itself.
My only comment is that I noticed that, well, we had direct sales over the past few months and Bridge Street, as the, the Harbor Master mentioned, was pretty busy and it was. That's, that's good news and bad news. So before we go out to the public, how about Vic? Anything you need to add?
Who's that to me?
Yeah, right. I'm sorry. Vic Poto.
Nick Muto.
Muto, right, sorry.
Yes, yes. Just, just as far as the, the mechanics of moving people through the fish pier, you know, even into the height of, of the summer, the natural bottleneck of, of people getting down there is the ability, the ability to park and, and, you know, provide access from the upper lot and the surrounding roads. So that, it has a natural, you know, ceiling to it, if you will, that there's only going to be, it's not like you're, we're going to be doubling the amount of people down there at any given time. Just because of lack of places for them to park their vehicles and actually gain access to the fish pier. I've also spoken with my, you know, a couple of the other fishermen down there, and we're definitely not opposed to hiring on our, of our own dime, police details to help us work through, you know, moving people through, making it safe and, and so on. You know, again, we're, it's, it's been so successful for us that we can, you know, we're spending a little bit money, a little bit of money on, on a police detail down there to help us out, move people through, is definitely not out of the question. And again, I just think letting this go through to, as to a trial early in the season, before things get really busy down there, would be paramount to the success of this as it goes back to Aunt Lydia's Cove. Again, we've, we've all kind of discussed this amongst ourselves anyway without, because we haven't been able to have a meeting. You know, it's through a series of phone calls. And again, we're all fishermen, you know, four out of five of us are fishermen anyway. So we've all kind of talked about this. Really delaying this would be, you know, it'd be hugely financially impactful, you know, kind of cutting the legs out from a few of these, you know, a few of us fishermen who want to do this down there in the near term. You know, and really it's going to get kicked back to Aunt Lydia's Cove where we've kind of discussed this already. So I'm kind of hoping that we could at least get a trial to somewhere between the 15th and the, I, I think Stuart suggested the 25th, you know, somewhere in there might be, you know, just a, a big help and a, and a real stepping stone for where we can move this, move this forward from.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm told Doug has his hand up. I don't see any, my, my raising hand part doesn't work, but Doug Feeny, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you very much. So when you were talking about the leaseholders down there, I don't think that'd have any effect on the two leaseholders. They do work in, in volume, but I did want to add that the new fish pier market owner, we definitely bring him in on this conversation. We wouldn't want to be bad neighbors with them. So I just wanted to leave you with that. That would definitely be, be part of the conversation.
Okay, thank you. And I think in general, the, the Board agrees it should go back to Aunt Lydia's Cove. Do I have any public input? Okay, hearing none. I guess I would ask, I don't think we need a vote on this. We would, we, we could, if we, if the Board agrees, we have a consensus that we bring it back to the, bring this issue to the Aunt Lydia's Cove. Mentioned it was brought up before, but this is a specific request for specific times, and I think it should go back to the committee. Any comments?
Mr. Vice Chairman? Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, no, I, I think it should go to Aunt Lydia's Cove. And it could, you could do that with some alacrity to Mr. Muto's point about wanting to get some kind of trial in place by the middle of the month. I mean, it is June 2nd. We did approve their meeting virtually, if you will. You know, as, as quick as they can meet, they can meet and cogitate and ruminate and come up with a series of recommendations so that maybe a trial could be struck in the, in the month of June. Again, I'm, I'm interested in seeing something work, but I just, I'm scratching my head how it works in the middle of the summer, number one. Number two, we have the trap dock, what's the next item on the agenda, you know, it also, is also another site where commercial folks might be able to sell their wares right over the, right over the dock. And then we also have 90 Bridge, which I know they've been, they've been selling scallops there as well. So I think there are other, other places in the town of Chatham, other than the fish pier during the height of the season, that fishermen could sell their wares. I just wanted to make that point. And I would hope that if there has been kind of pre-agreements between the fishermen, that, that meeting of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee maybe, maybe could be done with some alacrity, then also with some efficiency when they do meet and they could get back to us quickly. Thank you. But I'm not ready to do anything tonight without their input. I'm just not ready to do that. Thank you.
I would agree. Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Dean?
I agree with what Jeff said. And as I pointed out earlier, you can't just, even if we wanted to go ahead with it in principle tonight, we still would need, as I read Stuart's email, and I don't have the regulation in front of us, we would have to amend the right, the fish pier regulations. So we don't have any language or proposal for that. So I think that's premature. And I think the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee is a committee of the town. It's a, they have to meet as a body and deliberate and, and make a recommendation regardless of, you know, any previous, you know, discussions. So I'm fully in agreement that it should go before them first.
I agree. I don't think we need a vote on something like this, but this, the consensus is to send it back to Aunt Lydia's Cove. Yes.
Stuart here. Just wanted, I just wanted to point out a, a couple of complications that I've mentioned to Nick and, and Doug, which people may not be familiar with. If you drive your vehicle down the fish pier and between the fish market and the crosswalk that leads to the observation deck, that is technically Barcliff Avenue extension. It ends at the bulkhead. And then if you look north or to your left, between the fish market and the bulkhead, the water, that is not our property. That is owned by the fish market. We have an easement over there to maintain and have a bulkhead. We do not have an easement to, to have public trespass over that property. If you move further to the north of the fish market, okay, where the Coast Guard boats are, I'm trying to give people a visualization, that also is not owned by the town of Chatham. That is also an easement. So it now limits you for this activity to the unloading area in front of the observation deck in the packing building. Okay, that's, that's not going to happen because that has always been done for fueling and unloading. So that limits us to the south jog area. And I just wanted to kind of point that out for, for the people who are contemplating this. This is not an easy endeavor. And, and I don't want to mislead people into thinking that, that it will be. It's a, it's, it's, it's a very, very crowded facility and we're going to be adding significant people traffic in an area where we do not want them. We've been trying to get them onto the observation deck. So you know, off-season, off-time, that certainly can be, we could talk about in-season. During the height of the offloading, that, that is simply, I don't see how that takes place. And just lastly, there are two sets of regulations that govern the use of the fish pier. One is the real estate property, which is the Board of Selectmen, and the other is the water part of the regulations, which is the Harbor Master regulations. So we would be having, we'd have to amend two sets of regulations in order to make this take place.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay. I see Aunt Lydia's Cove is going to have their hands full. So I think, I think that's, that's, that's covered up. Back over to you, Shereen.
Okay. Thank you very much, Peter and everybody.
Thank you very much, Peter and everybody. So moving down the line here, Trap Dock Project Update from Dr. Duncanson. I'm assuming.
Thanks, Shereen. Okay, I'm going to share my screen again. And hopefully we'll just, everybody will see this next. So Trap Dock Project. Unlike the Fish Pier Observation Deck, this project has moved along at lightning speed. So the top picture was taken on December 26th of last year. Hopefully everybody can see these pictures. Just prior to construction starting, you have the trap dock in the middle, you have the old fish house, the contractor's barge is on site, you have the Old Mill Boilyard right to the north with the Harbor Master's Office, and then you have the Stage Harbor Yacht Club Pier to the south. Fast forward to today, the bottom picture, and you can see we have an entirely different looking site. The new pier is up. The parking area has had the, the articulated mats put in place and the contractor frankly, when I talked to the site supervisor on Monday, indicated that they would be demobilizing from the site probably by tomorrow or the end of the week at the latest. Pretty much everything is finished. They were, they were already working on punch list items. And here's a couple of more close-up shots taken from the waterside. These just indicate what is already in place. And in the center there in the top picture, you've got the new dock at the site, you've got Old Mill Boilyard to the right, and you've got Stage Harbor Yacht Club Pier remaining to the left. And you can see the entire site is now wide open. Unfortunately, the telephone pole right in the center practically of the picture is still there. We attempted to get that pole removed as part of this project. We have in fact undergrounded the utilities that used to come from that pole into the Harbor Master Building. All those utilities have been moved underground, but because there were a number of transformers and whatnot on that pole, we just couldn't coordinate quickly enough with Eversource to get that pole out of there and, and moved across the street. So we decided to pull that, leave the pole there for right now. But as many, you may or may not be aware, we're going to be building a wastewater pump station across the street behind the Harbor Master's Workshop. And as part of that project, we're going to get rid of that pole and underground new lines from that wastewater pump station, which will have an emergency generator in it, and then bring those lines underground and meet up with some new conduit that we actually installed in the ground in, in anticipation of, of that move. And so that will then enable us to get rid of that pole and basically get rid of any overhead wires that are right there that, you know, even today, having that pole there with the wires right at the intersection when boats are being brought in and launched is problematic. Here's a closer up shot of the site. You can see the articulated mats are in. We have the new curbing between us and the Stage Harbor Yacht Club Project. We included that articulated mat right up to the Harbor Master Building. We installed the new guard rail along the Harbor Master Building so that, you know, because we now have a more wide open, easily traveled area as opposed to the kind of, you know, rutted dirt driveway that was there before, we wanted to make sure we protected A, the Harbor Master Building, but also the electrical utilities and gas meters and all that are there. We actually carried that articulated mat all the way around to the front of the Harbor Master Building. We put a new ADA compliance sidewalk in, ending from the existing walkway on the left side of the Harbor Master Building or the, the east side, if you will, out to the float that was redone a couple of years ago. So people no longer trape it around in that peystone, which was unsightly and frankly unsafe in many ways. So we now have that nice solid articulated mat all the way in those areas so that when trucks drive around there to step masks or anything for boats that have just been launched, they'll now have a nice solid surface to work on. But you can see in this picture that the Harbor, the contractor is pretty well starting to demobilize from the site. They've pretty well backed out of the site with all the heavy equipment and whatnot. They were working today on getting the overhead cranes up that will service the, the new trap dock. And they're going to continue along and then ultimately the yacht club next door is going to rebuild their pier as well. And the bottom picture is just an overhead to show that we now have a nice municipal facility between the Old Mill Boilyard, parking area, ramp, Harbor Master Building, and the new area that's now gone in for the trap dock and the new pier. Just quickly to run through the numbers, the contract with ACK Marine was for $2.3 million. That does include a $47,000 change order that was installed. They bill, billed us to date for a little over 2.1 million. We've got 112,000 in retainage. And then as, you know, folks are aware, GEI Consultants is our engineers for the project. And in learning our lesson from the Trap Dock Project, we brought Palmeri Associates on board officially to act as the owner's project representative. And, and just, so I summarized here where we are in terms of the budgets and what we have remaining. We had a project contingency of roughly $230,000. We've already processed one change order in the tune of 47,000. There is another change order pending right now for approximately 30,000. So we will use approximately $80,000 out of our original contingency. So we'll, we'll end the project still with about $150,000 in the contingency and no unexpected overruns on this project. As I said, the contractor indicated they will be out of the site by the end of this week, if they're not pretty well out of there by tomorrow or Thursday. It is a little bit later than the original contract deadline we were hoping for, but, you know, like everybody else, there were delays due to COVID-19. But we've worked with the contractor to extend their contract at no cost. We are, we did agree to pick up some overtime costs that they're incurring because they, they started working instead of eight-hour days, they started working 10-hour days to get this project done as quickly as possible, knowing that the fleet was going to be kicked out of Harwich and heading back to Chatham, you know, in the next week or so. So we did agree to cover some costs of that additional overtime that they were encountering. But I will tell you, this contractor has been wonderful to work with. They've been extremely responsive. You may know they had a problem early on in the project when they had a crane failure. The crane that was shown in the original pictures on the barge suffered a failure. They couldn't be repaired here. They actually had to take the barge and all back to the Boston area and then take the crane off and send it off to be repaired. Within 24 hours of that, they had a backup plan and had brought in another crane, a land-based crane. And so they have been extremely responsive. They worked pretty well all through the COVID-19 early situation when the carpenters' union, which affected the project, closed down. ACK stepped in and brought their own, some of their own people in to keep things moving. And then we worked with them and, and sent a letter to the state asking that the carpenters' union reconsider, you know, stopping work in the site, which they did in about a week. And so we were able to get things back up to speed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on either, on this project or anything else down in that area.
Thanks, Dr. Duncanson. I see that Jeff has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Bob, for that update. I mean, the con, you know, it just goes to show you that with whom you contract really does matter. They, they've done a remarkably good job down there. I didn't go last weekend, but I went down the weekend before. It's very well constructed. It's impressive. You know, we paid a lot of money for it, but I, hopefully we'll get a lot of use out of it. Now, they may be a little behind the eight ball in terms of timing, but it's, if timing's good enough, because it's, it's going to be, hopefully it'll be ready, I think, in time for it's used this summer by our commercial fishing fleet. So I think that's most important. One quick question, Kim. Number one or two quick questions. Is that, is that telephone pole live electricity, number one? And number two, can you get tractor trailers by on either side of it? Can you get a big truck? Can you squeak a truck in there?
Yes, absolutely, because as you probably know, there were tractor trailers down there that used to pull up to the old Eldridge Pier and offload. So, and that pole's in exactly the same place it was. And yes, it is live. And as I said, we had, you know, we did underground the utilities from that pole into the Harbor Master's Office, but ultimately our goal is to get that pole out of there, but that will require working with Eversource, moving all those transformers. We've actually identified a pole to the north side of the Harbor Master's Facility Workshop where those transformers and all could be relocated to. But that's, because of all that, it's going to be a much more involved process and we just, we couldn't get it done in time to meet the timelines for this project.
Yeah, as long as you get a truck in there, I think, you know, I think that's fine.
Yeah, the new pier is actually designed to handle two 18-wheelers simultaneously.
The whole complex down there now, the, at least the pier, the, the piers by the Harbor Master's Office building and this pier is gorgeous. Just too bad that the, kind of the Stage Harbor Yacht Club didn't kind of play ball, but that doesn't, you know, there, it's a great job to everybody and good job to ACK and it is an impressive facility. It'd be really neat when they get the hoist up, et cetera. I'll be quiet. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, what is the, is there a hard opening date for that, Bob, when the hoists are up and ready to go?
As I said, the contractors indicated that they should have everything up and running by Friday. You know, there may be a few still punch list items left to go, but their intent is to turn it over to us for use by the end of this week.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the remote participants? Okay, Bob, thank you. It's nice to see you.
Well done.
Yeah. Okay, next order of business is the dredging beach nourishment town-owned dredge program. Bob?
Okay, I will, I'll try to run through these fairly quickly because I know the hour is getting late. Just a quick update, Stage Harbor Entrance Channel dredging. We finished up with Dredget, the company that we hired to do that work as of last week. They dredged approximately 22,000 cubic yards, all of which was put up on Harding's Beach. So that, that work has basically been completed. As part of that, a couple other things took place. We brought in, well, one of the big things that, that Dredget was able to accomplish was they were able to punch through the shoal that was encroaching or not encroaching, but pretty well shut off that entrance channel from the east side. And I apologize, I don't have an aerial photo to show you. They were able to punch through that entire shoal and that, that did a couple of things for us. If you remember, we had the Army Corps dredge Currituck here back in January. At the time, they were not able to do that because it was too shallow for the Currituck to work in. And so they actually had to create an S-shaped, S-curved channel, which while okay, was not very efficient for them to use or for the boating public. And it was further complicated by the fact that a couple of the Coast Guard navigational buoys in that area were totally sanded in. The Coast Guard came in, they removed the buoys, but they were unable to remove the block and tackle associated with them because they were so sanded in. And so that was another obstacle to the Currituck working efficiently. So we brought Dredget in, which was the company that had been working over at Outermost Harbor, and as you know, was the low, lowest bidder of three bids received to do this. They were able to punch through that shoal. We then brought in Robert Our Company and, and a large excavator on their barge. And yesterday, they were able to remove the large 2,000-pound concrete blocks as well as the chain that had held the buoys that were sanded in. So, and, and as a matter of fact, when they were doing that, they actually found a third buoy that had sunk there years ago, and so we removed that. So now we have a channel, a straight channel that the Currituck can work efficiently in. So the, the third piece of this triad, if you will, is we contracted directly with the Army Corps to bring the Currituck back to Chatham. Normally, as you know, getting the Army Corps, we're relying on their federal funding. Well, they contacted us, said they had about $150,000, which could cover their mobilization cost of getting their equipment from Maryland up to Chatham, if Chatham was interested in paying like a day rate. So basically, we're paying to rent the Army Corps dredge. We signed up for 10 days worth at $360,000. We had the money between our dredging account and some of our Mass Works grants for beach nourishment and dredging. So right now, all the paperwork is in place. The money's being sent by electronic transfer to the Army Corps and we're expecting the dredge Currituck to come back to Chatham probably in another week to 10 days or so for about a 10-day period. And hopefully they will be able to work very efficiently now that the buoys are out of the way, they have a straight channel to work in. So they'll be able to widen and deepen that channel significantly so that we hopefully we get through a good summer. But as you all know, that area is so dynamic at this point. Unfortunately, we just don't know how long that's going to last. You know, the one downside to the Currituck working is she can't put the sand up on the beach. So it'll be dumped offshore in the approved dumping site. We have already talked potentially about using that site if we need more sand, and obviously we do, we need more sand up on Harding's in the, you know, in the next round, say maybe next fall or something, but actually mining that sand from the dump site and putting it up on the beach. And then the third or the fourth component of our dredging project is we just finished up with the Barnstable County dredge. We had them come in and dredge out the entrance channel to Mill Creek as well as the deposition basin there, and that sand was put up on Cockcove Beach because that was another beach that we were in dire straits. As you know, last year, we had to shut the beach down for a while. We were facing similar situation this summer, but we were able to get the county to come up here with one of their dredges and dredge that out. We put about 7,000 or 8,000 cubic yards. Unfortunately, there wasn't as much sand there as, as we kind of hoped there would be, but it was put on Cockcove Beach and then on the feeder beach to the west so that that will nourish not only Cockcove, but also Ridgevale Beach as we go throughout the summer. So those are some of the major items that we finished in terms of physical dredging. I'll just quickly touch on the study that you folks in town meeting authorized, which is to look at a town-owned dredge. That project is underway. We signed the contract with FOTH Engineering several months ago. There's a completion date of the end of July for that work, so I would anticipate that we will see a draft report from them sometime around the beginning of July. We got an update from them yesterday. You know, things are moving along. They're doing their analysis of, of basically four alternatives, which is a town dredge, partnering with other towns, hiring commercial contractors, or relying on the county dredge program. So those are kind of the three different scenarios they're looking at. They've done an entire analysis of 10 years' worth of, of town dredging projects in the past, so they know where we need to dredge, how much we need to dredge, the conditions in the area. We've provided them a lot of economic data on house values in Chatham and rentals and all kinds of things. So that's all being factored into the economics of all this. And then it'll all come together, come together as part of a proposal or a report to the town evaluating what may make sense for us to continue. Because as you know, when we, you know, when we put the Stage Harbor dredging out to bid, we got a great bid from Dredget because they were already mobilized in here. They were working directly at Outermost Harbor. The other two bids to do that work were both in, you know, around a million and a half dollars. So, you know, if you had to, if we had to look at that at least once a year, say for the Stage Harbor Entrance Channel, you know, over time, you're talking very serious money. So that's why, one of the reasons why we're undertaking this study and that and the fact that the county is still not got their program really up to speed where it was, say, three, four years ago and, and for decades before that. You know, they are trying to get their program remobilized. They've got three dredges now. They theoretically have two crews. They've been down by COVID-19 as everybody has been. They are looking for a dredge manager at the county level, something they never, never really had before. They realize that they can't have the current administrative staff deal with it because it is so specialized. But it's still going to take them, you know, another year or two to kind of get that program back to where it was. And, you know, we can't necessarily wait for that to happen, given some of our situations in Stage Harbor, Aunt Lydia's Cove, you know, Chatham Harbor. So that quickly is where we are kind of on the dredging and beach nourishment side, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Shereen, I think you're muted. Shereen, I think you're muted.
Thanks, Bob. I'm going to repeat myself. Um, on the, uh, on the analysis being done by Foth engineers. And you mentioned that there was, um, house values that were being considered, but, um. But i- is there an economic analysis of the, um, recreational and the commercial boating? Um, industry in this town? Because I can imagine that's a fairly substantial. Uh, would be a fa- fairly substantial number to be considered.
Yes, they're looking at all those things as best they can with the available data they can garner from us, the Cape Cod Commission and and others. Uh, they've actually brought in a consultant who specializes in those kind of economic studies. So, yes, they're they're looking at all that for us.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Bob on the dredging program? Jeff?
Yeah, just to comment and a couple of questions, uh, to your point, uh, Madam Chairwoman, there there are four. Boat yards inside stage harbor that you do them, do the economic multiplier for those four boat yards. Just with them alone, you're thinking you're talking millions of dollars of economic activity. It's very important economic driver for the town of Chatham. Bob, good, good, good job of getting the car check back here. Um. I mean, that that that's kudos to you. I know it's expensive, but, you know, I think we're spending. Uh, uh, kind of big money now, so I'm very, very pleased that you're getting Foth in here to do this analysis that. Who knows what they'll say, but I think it's something we really look forward to receiving, and it sounds like they're going to do a really good job. Thank you very much. Good job.
Yeah, just on the Currituck issue, um, the the credit really goes to Ted Keon. I mean, he has really taken that ball and run with it. Um, you know, we did privately contract with the Army Corps about twelve years ago. Ted dusted that off and and said to them, hey, is this still, you know, do you guys still do this kind of stuff and? And, you know, it's been a whirlwind kind of two months to pull it all together, but it came through very quickly.
Good, thank you. Good job, Ted.
Um, yeah, it's a, it was a nice surprise to hear that Currituck was coming back to, uh, open up that channel a little more. And there's a few sailboats that are going to sigh relief. Um, heading, uh, heading out of the harbor, not having to wait for the tide. Um, any question, any, any more comments from the board for?
Yeah, and Madam Chair, yeah, I just wanted to echo what what Jeff said and I and I, you you look at a a study that's something like. What you what you discussed and you, you know, the four options or three options that you're looking at, they sound reasonable and I, it's. We'll never make a decision unless we get some sort of data and understand what's going to happen out there. So, uh, you know, given the cost that you were talking about, I don't know, you know, this is, this is our bread and butter, so. Uh, well done. And to Ted, well done.
Yes. Uh, any other comments from the board? Any questions from Dr. Bob from the remote participants? Okay, Dr. Dunkinson, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate your, uh, hard work. Um, okay, um, our next is sign annual town election warrant for June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Um, here it is. There's where our signatures will go. Um, I'm sure that Shauna has a plan for us to sign this when we, uh. At, you know, down to town hall. Um, but it's, um, the warrant is, um. Has been produced and, um, we're just here to, um, discuss. Signing this if anybody wants to make a motion. I, we have, um. Um, we have the place, the date, uh, June, uh, twenty-fifth. Um, there's, uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, there's the three-year term, Montemoy Regional School Committee, a three. Um, three-year terms, Housing Authority, five-year term. Um, we have a debt exclusion on the transfer station improvements for question one. And question two is a non-binding public advisory question about the insecurity. Or the security of Pilgrim, um, nuclear in Plymouth. Um, so we are set forth to sign this warrant, move it along.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the signing of the, uh, annual town election warrant for June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty as presented. And, um, that motion assumes that Shauna has, uh. A mechanism for applying our signatures either electronically or with a stamp without our having to physically sign them.
Correct. Julie has, uh, okayed the use of the e-signatures.
Okay, so I make that motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Corey seconded. Okay, um, we'll take a a vote on that. Um, uh. Dean.
Aye.
Uh, Corey.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, great. All right, so our last order of business tonight is, um, a somewhat of an annual event. There's Jill and, uh. It's in regard to the town, um, managers, uh, annual performance evaluation. And I'm going to make the presentation and give you a little background and, um. Uh, so for the public to know that for each year, um, since twenty eleven. Uh, Jill has been evaluated annually, uh, a performance evaluation. Um, that has been developed collaborati- collaboratively with the town manager and the Board of Selectmen. And it, um, to assist in the evaluation, the town manager did a summary of her, uh. Accomplishments and activities that occurred in twenty nineteen. Um, and then under our methodology, we had considerations to, um, a general managerial cat- categories. Uh, personal, professional, board support, relations, financial, uh, personal management, community leadership. Uh, town operations and infrastructure. And the way that the participation happened was the selectmen, um, then awarded performance points based on. A total of thirty-eight different subcategories using a four-point rating scale. For each, four points, it was excellent, high commendable, three points was strong performance. Uh, two points were satisfactory acceptable, one point was improvement needed and N O was not observed. So based on the point system, um, the town manager was awarded a composite score of three point eight nine. And this was the same composite score she received last year. And it indicates a strong collective praise for us, obviously, for her ongoing high performance and excellent managerial skills. Uh, she continues to rank in scoring range of strong performances to, uh, excellent, high commendable, mostly in the latter. Um, it is noteworthy that, um, Ms. Goldsmith received perfect four-point, um, scores. In twenty-three of the thirty-eight subcategories and received high respectable composite scores. A three point six to three point eight in an additional fourteen subcategories. Um, so, um. In one subcategory, there was a lower composite score of three point four still in the strong performance, uh, area. A twenty nineteen comments, um. Um, so basically, uh, just as some of the comments that we have about, uh, what she had, um, in her performance. Um, in addition to the measurements, we were asked to make comments, um, on each of the categories. And I'm just going, I'm not going to read them all, um, but they are, uh, considerable in their, uh, evaluation. I'll pick a few of them in each category. Uh, for professional and personal, um, category. Uh, Ms. Goldsmith maintains the highest standards of honesty and integrity regardless of what others may do. Truthful no matter the consequences. Fair and knowledgeable professional. She maintained an I C M A certification through the continued professional development. Fosters a team approach, high standard and leads by example. Highlights of her personal and team accomp- accomplishments are noted in the following sections. Tested by two unexpected crises, tornado and ongoing COVID nineteen, which was highly commendable. Um, in another piece, um, Jill's performance in this category is stellar. She poses this. Possesses the skills to resolve conflicts and has proven to be able to work under considerable pressure. Um, in the board support relationship area, um, there is more comments that we, that, um, spoke about Jill's ability. And, um. Um, from my own personal aspect, um, the ability to be able to work closely with her, um. Um, Jill's always been very forthcoming and immediate in in providing substantial information. And, um, has been great. Um, she's very skilled at finding solutions to problems quickly. Um, and as we move on, I find her to be a forward-thinking planner. Um, especially in these times during the COVID crisis. I, I think she was one step ahead of everybody. Um, I think it was prudent that she. Declared a state of emergency upfront and she created Chatham as a place that has, um, continued to have, provide. Services, um, that people, you know, during the time that the town has been shut down, but also that we are, we're in good shape. Uh, compared to other plan, other towns in our planning, and I think that's in place by Jill working very well with with staff and and thinking ahead. Uh, on the financial management side, um, financial results and process, uh, are simply outstanding. In light of un- economic uncertainty, the town manager has been able to provide us with solid information for budget decision-making. And from what I know, this is speaker, speaking with other communities in comparison of our town, it is in good shape. Um, I just said that, actually. Um, this continues to be an A-plus performance category for the town manager. She has been a great partner with the Board of Selectmen in protecting the town's fiscal standing. Um, on other matters here that we have, um, addressed, personal management and organizational leadership. Um, uh, let's see, of late, um, she has implemented policies and will serve to increase morale. Um, the, uh, the day off at the transfer station was a big plus, I think, for everybody. Um, and it was great to see those actions. Um, some other comments that were made in this category was putting town staff forward and leadership and delegation of staffs. Can have its drawbacks and the town, um, for the town manager to effectively appear. Uh, to the public to be on the forefront of the issues of a challenging project such as the Fish Pier. That was one piece that. Oh, um, that we saw that was a bit of a challenge, um, this year in in the performance. Um, but again, Jill has done a good job with her senior staff and she needs, um, and again, being asked to be more visible in the line. Of of line staff in the town. Um, let's see, on community leaning and public relations. Um, um, let's see, um, I believe Jill truly exceeds in this area. She's a wonderful representative for the town of Chatham. She's visible. She communicates well, um, with other communities and participates in municipal management associations. I would like to see more dredge consecutive conversations get underway. That was just one selectman's comment. In the town operations and infrastructure side, everybody truly appreciates the monthly reports, Jill. They're. Um, they're really informative and everybody in town should be reading those reports. It gives you a real, uh, eye to that. And your new, um, weekly update, community update has been very helpful in. Um, keeping people apprised to, uh, the COVID nineteen issues. And, um, at actionable items that that the town can take, uh, as community members, and that's been. Um, a really a good plus to see that come forward. Um, it it's been great. Um, the other pieces here, um. Excuse me, my throat's dry. The large number of town programs and services have been a considerable success. One project is experiencing considerable delay. We know that. Um, although it's just completed, primary cause is the contractor support, although quality is good. Lessons learned, and I think their lessons have been learned on this. Um, we've talked about that, Jill. Um, in some of our planning meetings for the agenda item, that this is lessons learned and it was an unusual situation. Um, and never ha- you know, to experience a, um, that project the way that it happened. But we're moving on and we're figuring that out. Um, so, um, let's see, um. That was gentle, um, about that, um. Again, the West Chatham roadway project is a bit of a disappointment for everybody, but, um. And we hope that that gets on track and it seems to, um, it seems to be a work in progress. So in conclusion, uh, in the collective judgment of the five of us, the town manager has overall performed her job, responsibility. At the highest level of achievement. She is a consummate professional. Who works well with the board and serves the town's best interests. The town of Chatham is very fortunate to have Jill, and thank you very much. And we'll let you make some comments if you'd like.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, thank you to the board. It's really a pleasure, pleasure to serve you as well as this community and my home. Uh, it's, I'm going on my ninth year here in the town and never a boring day. There's always a a ton of excitement. And a very challenging year as a town manager or professional in my, my thirty years of doing this. To have a tornado and a pandemic. And I think that the community has come together, certainly, um, my team of of all, of all employees. Uh, everyone has always stepped up, but I think this is where they've really shined. So. I I think I'm a little lucky being able to have this evaluation right after one of those extraordinary circumstances. But I I take the board's comments very seriously, and as you know, I'm probably harder on myself than any of you will ever be. But I I really appreciate the board's comments. So we had the opportunity to talk one-on-one. And that I feel very comfortable talking one-on-one with any of you, and I know that you feel the same, being able to contact me for a quick question, and I. I think that that policy and that partnership is really important to have that open communication. So. Probably the most time spent on a meeting except for when I'm presenting a forty-six million dollar budget. Um, but otherwise, I'm thrilled to work here and I'm very thankful to the board, uh, to the community, to all our employees. That I'm very fortunate and very lucky. So thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Um, I just want to know if any of the board members had a comment, uh, they'd like to make. Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Jill, I just want to, uh, something that just came in today, and I think everyone should know it because. When, when, um, we meet with other selectmen at at our selectmen meetings once a month and during the last couple of months, it's been. Sort of eye-opening on some of the issues that they have, but a lot of them have. Financial issues and financial problems, and they're worried about their, their triple A bond rating. Uh, some have just gotten it and they're, they're really concerned. We just received notice on ours and and I just want to read what they said. Uh, Chatham enters the national rest recession triggered by the outbreak of COVID nineteen with strong reserves. And liquidity and a well, uh, well embedded financial management policies, particularly in the areas of budgeting and planning. While significant economic uncertainty remains, we understand management has taken measures to cushion the effects. Of potential revenue shortfalls and has additionally measured, has has additional measures of its. Just at its disposal that would implement if necessary. Now, the point I I think I may. Like to make is we were able to get a, 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 I don't know if you call it barebow muzzle, but last year's budget was just a little bit of an increase. For, for, uh, things that that we didn't have control over and still have, uh, over two million dollars in free cash. And that is just outstanding. Uh, I don't, I don't think people realize how tough that is, and I I really appreciate that because it makes our job easier too. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, any other comments from the board? Okay, Jill, thank you for, oh, Jeff, go ahead.
Great job, Jill. Thank you very much for your time, your effort and your good works. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Good job.
I think you're seeing, yes, Dean.
Thank you.
I just want to echo what what Peter and and Jeff and 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 you said, Madam Chair, and reading the report. Um, I think we're very fortunate to have Jill as our town manager and, um, what Peter said is really makes a lot of sense. I'm not sure if you mentioned that we actually got the triple A. Rating, Peter, but that was, um, very, very well, uh, quoted from the report that just came in late this afternoon, so. Continue to be one of the better positioned towns, which is why I think, and I'm going to use this as a pitch for town meeting. Why we're one of the towns in in this few towns that are able to go to a town meeting. Uh, during the regular, almost regular time period, uh, uh, and have a a a budget that's cogent. And that has been prepared by our town manager with her staff. So, um, we're, we're in a good position and again, it's a. Well, well done, uh, to Jill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Corey. Any, any thoughts? You're muted.
Oh, sorry, sorry, no, I got it. I'm I'm muted. No, uh, I think, you know, Team Chatham has done very well. I think collectively, um. Staff, uh, town manager, our staff, the board, uh, our citizens, collectively, we have a great community and we've, we've again proven it. Um, you know, we've, we've gone through thick and thin. We've gone through some very interesting times this year. Twenty twenty is a, is a year that we we may want to not remember, but, um. Um, no, I'm very happy with, um, the evaluation. Uh, I think we, you know, we have a big group of, group we're working together. Uh, I think we've been very direct with each other. We all have room for improvements. And, uh, I think, I think collectively that, uh, I'm very happy with where we are and. And I think, I think collectively that I'm very happy with where we are and, and the direction that we're heading in. So let's get 2020 behind us and look for brighter days.
Thank you, Corey. Well said. Any final thoughts, Jill? You're all set.
Thank you. And our bond rating AAA was reaffirmed with a stable outlook today, but more on that later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jill. That's going to conclude our business for tonight. So a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a roll. We'll start with Jeff.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. So it is now, oh, 9:25, a little early this evening.
All right. Good night, everybody.